Is to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mike, second by Brooke. Any further discussion? There are none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried, the agenda is approved. Second item on the agenda is communication. We have public comment time. The state's board's agenda is full and I'll place a maximum of thirty minutes for public comment. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will now respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. Topic from public comment that is not suited to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Do we have anybody for public comment today?
Good morning, if you wish to address the board, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Is there anybody on here that wishes to address the board? All right, same note, and we do not have anyone joining by phone today.
Okay, we'll end the public comment part of the agenda and move on to the director's report.
Thank you President Robbins, Vice President Axiotis, and members of the State Board of Education. Good morning, and as always, thanks to each of you for your service on the board. And thank you for joining us today in Storm Lake. Yesterday, we visited the Storm Lake Community School District to see the impact of the TPRA, or the Teacher and Parent Educator Registered Apprenticeship Program on Storm Lake students and the broader school community. And as you know, Governor Reynolds directed over forty-five million dollars to support seven hundred and twenty-six current TPRA participants across the state. And in Storm Lake, we observed teacher learning labs that were facilitated by an instructional coach, a dual-language immersion program with an excellent teacher apprentice in action, and met with teacher apprentices pursuing K-12 ESL and special education endorsements. Storm Lake's work is in partnership with Buena Vista University, who is hosting the board here today. And we're, of course, in Storm Lake celebrating board member Mike May's twelve years of service on the State Board of Education. Which we look forward to further recognizing alongside other board members during our board reports. One significant agenda item today that I want to preview is the first read of the revision of Iowa academic standards for mathematics led by our incredible standards team that's here today. Please recall that this proposed revision reflects the feedback of dozens of educators this winter producing the first proposed revised draft. The draft was then published for public comment. The team held five in-person listening sessions in January across the state. And we also received feedback through a statewide public survey that received over three hundred responses. We then can reconvene the expert focus groups to again review the feedback representing all stakeholders, including educators, administrators, higher education, industry, and families. These expert focus groups and the department team produced the second proposed revised draft, which is before you today. We, of course, thank all who have participated in this robust public comment process and the many educators who invested significant time and expertise in both review committees. This draft is presented for first read with the recommended action at the April board meeting. And as a reminder, the math standards and all Iowa content standards were first adopted in 2010. And we are ensuring that the department has a regular review and revision process. These have not been substantively revised since 2010. So moving forward, we will ensure substantive review and revision every five years in support of the State Board of Education. I just want to preview some of the most significant updates of the proposed revised math standards. They include identifying the level of focus, so major supporting or additional work, identifying the level of rigor for each standard, so conceptual, procedural, and application, identifying the standards of mathematical practice in three bundles, so problem-solving, communicating reasoning, and modeling and data analysis, writing new standards for statistics and probability, pre-calculus, and calculus courses, and then finally articulating high school math course pathways that are aligned to career pathways. The review and revision of the ELA standards is following a similar process. In February, the board put out a call for educators, administrators, and content experts, especially those with a background in the science of reading, to review the state's ELA standards and to provide suggestions for revisions. And that group is finalizing its review and recommendations for the first proposed revised draft now. The department has also issued another call for educators, content specialists, administrators, families, industry, and community partners, and representatives from higher education to serve on a subsequent review committee following the public comment process for the standards. That application for the second round of expert reviewers closes tomorrow, Friday, March twenty-second. And then final standards proposal will go before the State Board of Education. For consideration at a subsequent board meeting, it will follow a similar process with the first and then final read, covering at least two board meetings. I also want to provide an update on an agenda item we briefly talked about at the last board meeting, which is around a request for proposals that the team facilitated for evidence-based curriculum and high-quality instructional materials across K-12 ELA and math. And this process has relied upon internal and external experts reviewing those submissions. It's intended to provide information and transparency to district and school leaders as they make curriculum decisions. And again, it does not in any way limit options, but again, is informational. Please recall that the department will enter into statewide contracts with providers of evidence-based curricula and high-quality instructional materials. These contracts will have negotiated pricing off of which all school districts may contract. We also want to provide an update on the department's recently announced expanded partnership with Ask Resource Center to provide advocacy support services for families and children with disabilities across the state. And as you know, Ask Resource Center is the only parent training and information center for Iowa recognized by the federal U.S. Department of Education and specifically the Office of Special Education Programs or OSEP. In partnership with Ask, families across Iowa will have the support of family specialists, family mentors, and then experts that are focused on accessibility and post-secondary transitions as they advocate for their children with disabilities. And services will be regionally located in each of Iowa's nine superintendents and AEA regions with the equivalent of approximately eighteen FTEs consisting of both full-time and part-time team members. And the services provided will include helping ensure that families have understanding of IDA requirements, case law, and other educational laws, preparing families for meeting with their child's IEP team, attending IEP meetings with families, and helping them to articulate concerns, requests, or expectations to best support their child, and supporting families in navigating through due dispute resolution. This is a performance-based contract that's funded with the department's discretionary portion of its federal allocation for IDA. And then we also have an update on a number of grant opportunities at various stages in the grant-making process. Most recently, since our last meeting, the department has announced a three-point-five-million-dollar investment in a competitive grant called Learning Beyond the Bell, which is an opportunity to create, expand, and sustain high-quality before and after-school programs that support families and, of course, advance student achievement. All Iowa schools are eligible to apply, and they are encouraged to partner with community organizations. Schools can apply for up to two-hundred-thousand dollars to develop or expand programming that incorporates evidence-based instruction in identified academic-focused areas that are based on the needs of the students being served. And the deadline to apply is Friday, next Friday, March twenty-ninth. And of course, if any of the board members are interested in serving as an external expert, peer reviewer on that kind of application, please do let us know. We welcome your expertise in our independent reviews and scoring of grant applications. And then likewise, and we've talked about this grant before, but the credentials for Childcare Careers Grant has been published. Governor Reynolds and the department has announced one million dollars in initial funding for competitive grants to expand access to high-quality childcare while supporting the early childhood workforce that is of and for local communities. Grants will support school districts that partner with or create local childcare centers to provide childcare and support high school CTE students in earning a nationally-recognized credential, their Child Development Associate. So by aligning existing programs to the attainment of an industry-recognized credential, which is a significant focus of the department's work and the board's work, this new program will help strengthen pathways to in-demand child development careers. And the deadline to apply for that grant opportunity is also next Friday, March twenty-ninth. And then I also want to provide an update on the credentials to Careers Grant, which we've talked about at previous board meetings. That grant closed on Friday, February sixteenth. It provides one-point-seven million in competitive grants to Iowa school districts that are seeking to align their CTE programs to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials across all career pathways. It has an update, the response has exceeded available funds by three times and we intend to announce awards soon. And then finally, within the grants component of the update, we have the therapeutic classroom incentive grant, which you all are familiar with. We have recently announced the application period for the latest round of that grant, the twenty-four-twenty-five school year. This grant, as a reminder, supports therapeutic classrooms to assist learners whose emotional, social, or behavioral needs interfere with their success in the learning environment. It's an incentive grant that was established by the General Assembly in 2020. It's a part of a statewide effort to increase the behavioral supports for children and youth and families. And this year's iteration of the grant marks the fourth round of the therapeutic classroom incentive grant. Last year, six Iowa schools received the grant, and a total of twenty-two schools across the grant's lifecycle have received the grant. Applications will be accepted through May first for that opportunity. I also want to provide a brief update on our Perkins State Plan. The department is now seeking public input on the Iowa Perkins Five State Accountability Plan. And as you know, under Perkins Five State, you're required to report annually on core indicators of performance for both secondary and post-secondary CTE programs. We are also required, as an agency, to update our state-determined levels of performance or state goals for academic years twenty-four through twenty-nine. And our performance goals were developed by the department's Perkins Five Accountability Subcommittee that includes educators and administrators from secondary and post-secondary programs across the state as well as representatives from regional planning partnerships. So we are welcoming feedback on those performance goals or those state-determined levels of performance through May seventh. I also want to draw your attention to some upcoming engagement opportunities. So the Governor STEM Advisory Council and the Department's STEM Bureau is hosting the 2024 Iowa Classrooms and Workplaces Summit on April tenth at the Iowa Event Center in Des Moines. And the summit invites Iowans from business and industry, education, nonprofits, trade organizations, professional societies, government agencies, elected officials, students, and more to come together to make connections and to learn more about establishing learning environments that link the classroom to real-world career pathways. As you may be familiar, Kimon Industries will also recognize the six recipients of the 2024 STEM Teacher Award. At this summit, this award has been sponsored by Kimon Industries for the past decade since 2014. The summit is, of course, free of charge and open to the public, and we hope to see many of you there. And then finally, the department is currently accepting nominations for our 2025 Iowa Teacher of the Year. And at our last board meeting, you, of course, have the opportunity to meet the 2024 Teacher of the Year, Anne Meeks, who is an educator in Des Moines Public School and is an educator who has leveraged the science of reading to specifically invest, serve students in high school who are English language learners and many of whom are newcomers to her school district. For this Teacher of the Year selection process, each nomination will be reviewed by a team and then nine semi-final finalists representing teachers from across all nine regions, all nine superintendents and AEA regions will be selected as regional teachers of the year. And then the Iowa 2025 Teacher of the Year will be selected among those nine regional teachers of the year. The deadline for nominations is April sixteenth. We've extended that a couple weeks to ensure a really incredible, robust candidate pool. We had a record number of nominations last year, a hundred-plus nominations, and we hope to have even more nominations this year. Anyone can nominate a teacher who's been impactful in their life, so I encourage you to do so and to spread that message. And then we're also excited to celebrate some of Iowa's amazing teachers tomorrow at the 2024 Outstanding Iowa Teachers Recognition Luncheon alongside Governor Reynolds, Lieutenant Governor Craig, and then, of course, President Robbins and Vice President Axiotis. The annual luncheon will honor the finalists, our 2024 Teacher of the Year, Anne Meeks, and the awardee for Iowa History Teacher of the Year. It is hosted at D-MAC, and the luncheon is created and served by D-MAC's Iowa Culinary Institute. And then regarding engagement, just two items here. Last month, the students from Iowa Educational Services for the Blind and Visually impaired, or IESBBI, which is an entity that through alignment is now a part of the broader department education team, visited the Grimes Building and presented an incredible piece of artwork to the department. The art is made from cane patterns using a surrealist technique called automatic drawing. Students employed their cane movements to sketch the artwork, and they did so in partnership with Casey Slack, who is an artist based in Waterloo. This was created as a part of celebrating my cane safety day, which is observed each year on October fifteenth. And that art now hangs in the State Board of Education room, so we are excited to share it with you all at our next board meeting in Des Moines. And then finally, we had the pleasure of attending the Iowa Proster Invitational with over a hundred and fifty culinary students across Iowa. That great CTE opportunity continues to grow and provide opportunities for students to showcase their cooking, their cake decorating, and their management skills to industry professionals across Iowa. And just want to celebrate that Hampton Dumont High School received top honors in culinary and management competitions. They'll represent the state of Iowa at the national competitions next month in Baltimore. And then Sioux City North High School received top honors in cake decorating, which is a new competition. So excited about their success and the ability to continue to elevate and expand CTE pathways. And that concludes my director's report. Happy to answer any questions or providing any additional information that might be helpful.
Any questions for the director?
You've been busy.
The team has been busy.
Thank you.
I have just one question for math standards and ELA standards. Are they going to be like in a five-year rotation for review and revision, or what's the plan?
Yes, and that's consistent with national best practice, that we will have a regular five-year schedule for review and revision. We are doing two sets of standards this year for review and revision, math and ELA, but moving forward, those will be staggered. And then, as we've discussed, looking towards review and revision of the science standards next year.
Yeah, I was a little surprised it's been ten years.
I just want to give a shout out to the Hampton Dumont Culinary Arts Program. They've worked really hard on that, and that's something that they've excelled in for a number of years. So good luck to them on their way to Baltimore.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I want to call your attention to item D, which is scheduling a necessary additional board meeting on April twenty-sixth. We're looking at that as being at the start of nine AM at the Grimes State Office Building. And two of the agenda items will be approval of the AA budgets. And also, if there's not a lot of disagreement today with the math standard, we'd like to have our math standard approved at that meeting as well. So this is a note for the item B on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Brian, second by Mary. Any further discussion? There are none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. All right, strategic planning, vision, mission, goals, and outcomes.
Good morning.
Well done, Kim.
Thank you very much. Great to be here. I have sent to you and before you are the proposed goals and outcomes. Just as a recap, as you're well aware, in September, we started this project formally at our work session, and then we had another work session in November after one of our board meetings and had robust conversations about the mission, the vision, the goals, and outcomes, as well as action steps. At the board meeting on January eleventh, you did formally approve the vision and mission statements. And then you asked that the goals be rearranged, and Cassandra, Director Hall, proposed a fifth goal. And so that was incorporated into the goals as well. Since, and then February eighth board meeting, we brought the fifth goal to the board, and President Robbins then asked that the feedback be sent to me before this meeting. And I have incorporated your feedback into the goals and outcomes. So the feedback that I received was some wording primarily in the goals one through four and changing some of the verbs from promoting to promote to action verbs. And so those have been incorporated. And then I want to point out also that goal five, I had some feedback on that. Director Hall was helped with the wording for goal five, and then we had a suggestion to replace that goal with a different goal. And so that information is shared there as well. So I would encourage the board, and I would like to just say, since with all of this work, the leadership at the Department of Education has reviewed the mission and vision, and we have adopted the same vision and mission as the State Board. So moving forward, we're on the same path. And also in February, I held a division meeting for the preschool through twelfth grade Learning and Results Division, and all the staff came together. And our work was around the vision, mission, goals, and outcomes for that the State Board is working on. And we had great conversations, and there is really clear action steps that staff at the Department of Ed can take around these goals to help with the achievement of the goals. So that was just great conversations that we had. So today, I guess I would encourage the board to discuss and adopt the goals and outcomes that you wish to have as your strategic plan moving forward. Because as you know, one of the duties is to adopt and update annually a five-year plan for the achievement of educational goals in Iowa. So this plan then would be the five-year plan, two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine, and it will set the direction for schools and education in Iowa moving forward. President Robbins, I turn it over to you.
Okay, assuming everybody has the goal sheet in front of them that was provided. I'd like to take a look at them goal by goal, starting with goal one. When I read through this, I have a couple notes that I made for consideration and discussion, maybe others have notes as well. But in outcome A, as all learners feel safe and supported. And I like that goal, but I'm wondering if we should insert all learners and school personnel. Feel safe and supported. I just know that in a school setting where it's not only the students that need to feel safe and supported, it's also the people who work there need to feel the same way.
I think that's a good addition.
I like that.
Under item C, we use effectively, then we use effective again. That's a little redundant. I would recommend something like schools skillfully use effective positive student discipline practice. Or another verb there. And then item D, I would recommend for more consideration that schools implement, insert the word comprehensive, school safety strategies. That's all I had for goal one, but obviously entertain other suggestions as well as changes or tweaks for goal one.
Would you be open to that? I mean, I like your idea. Everybody that's employed by working at the school, but should it be even broader and include visitors? Because there's going to be other people in the, I mean, I just, I guess I'd want it to be everyone feels comfortable.
Yeah, because parents, right?
Guardians.
Sure.
Other visitors.
Sure.
Agreed.
I've thought about that, but that's.
Is this extend beyond the building? Safe place to be at home when I'm Googling or whatever, I'm Facebooking or whatever I do. Is that part of our responsibility, or is that part of what we need to do to ensure kids' safety?
I don't think we can ensure safety.
I'm thinking more in terms of the technology today and how kids experience some really unfortunate comments about themselves and their behavior. I guess I'm just asking, maybe.
I might see that, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, I might see that more under right of the D, where you get into the social media parts of that's part of your comprehensive safety strategies.
Yeah, and I kind of aligned it under B with the bullying and. But I do think it's hard to police that outside of the physical bullying.
Mike is right, what happens outside of school is often brought in.
That makes sense, too. Covering that somewhere else as long as we're trying to deal with that issue, I think, I'm good with that.
So Brian's comment as far as A, better read all learners, school personnel, and visitors.
That's good.
Yeah, community members.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Instead of visitors, community members.
I think parents would be included under that. I think parents feel very intimidated when they come to the school building frequently. And, but I think that covers visitors.
Visitors, community members, other.
I think visitors covers it.
Anything else with goal one? All right, let's move on to goal two. Any feedback there? The only thing I add for your consideration is that with the last goal, I would strike the word will. This academic standard establishes high expectations. And it's not something that's extremely important to me, so I can go either way of that.
I'm gonna go either way.
Same.
I was okay with two. With that, Jay. With that, Jay.
You're okay?
For the, for F, all early learners are ready for kindergarten, does that mean that all, I guess. Anyone who has, has access to. Um, like preschool or is enrolled in preschool or is just any. Any pre-K child, I mean, cause I mean, we don't have a hundred percent enrollment in pre-K doing at this point.
Preschool.
So, I guess who are we talking about when we say early learner? Are we talking about the ones enrolled or? Are just the teachers in pre-K or like supporting them?
I think the goal is to um, uh, infer both. Access to high-quality early learning opportunities and the quality of early learning opportunities. That results in kindergarten readiness.
So it's two-fold, okay.
Anything else with goal two? Alright, let's move on to goal three. Any feedback for goal three? Now, black gold threes. Good to go. Goal four. Ten three. Four is good.
Yeah.
Right. Goal five, you have a couple options. No, yeah, excuse me, Cass, you were taking leadership, assuming of goal five. With the first part of that and then Brian had an alternative suggestion for goal five. Cass, you wanna make any comments about the proposal language for goal five as far as the outcomes that you have and the goal that you have?
I love both of these suggestions, but I think they say different things. So I'd love to keep both of them as a proposal. Um, I think one addresses, you know, as the first proposal for go, goal five shares. Um, work culture for internal system ownership and then. I think the second one to me states kind of um, board responsibility, so. Um, to me, they say different things. But I like them both.
Do we have the. Authority to implement. Strategies with goal five as proposed?
Which, you mean which one?
Uh, either one as far as the outcomes.
So related to um, professional development opportunities and acknowledgement and celebration of team members. I think that is in, in conversation, please correct me if I'm wrong, with member halls. Um, but in conversation, I understand to be in an advisory capacity um, to support the internal operation of the department. Which it is, um, the internal operation of the department is not a full function, but advising the participants.
Uh, my, my view on five, and, and I did mean the other five to completely different. Um, I wasn't trying to make it safe. I, I just. I struggled with. Whether that's really the DOE's job, their original number five. And. I, I couldn't figure out a way to monitor that. Control that or even measure that. I, I just don't think we're in a position to do that. If you're in Des Moines. And meetings a year. I, I think. I mean, that's the DOE's job, that's the director's job. With all respect, I. I don't wanna. I don't know, I just, I was uncomfortable setting ourselves up to. If somebody asked in a year, well, what did you do? I don't know, and how did I measure that and how did it improve? I have to ask you.
Oh, sorry, Brian. I think when we look at all of our goals and, and I think this is an innovation for the board, in, in my opinion. So when you look at all of the system goals that we've set for external. System improvements and this is again, kind of outside the box thinking. Our internal system for the Department of Education is part of our responsibility, I guess, as I see it as well. The, the Department of Education supports the system of education as much as all of the external mechanisms as well. And I just believe very strongly that there is something that we as a board need to offer to. The amazing internal folks that are doing the work, supporting all of the external system of just saying. That we acknowledge you and the phenomenal things that you are doing and. We want to see you have an ability to grow your skills and abilities and so. You know, is there a metric that we can set to see that they have an ability to grow their skills, knowledge and capabilities? And that they're being celebrated for innovative ideas. Does it exist today that we can see it as a board? No, but is there something that we could create where we can see that, Brian? I think so, I think we can see in the state budget, in the department budget, that there's money being allocated for staff. For professional development, um, we can see, you know, we could ask for that information. Um, we could see the innovation or the ideas where there's collaboration happening with the new alignment of departments for sure. Um, so that's information that could be provided to us where this could be measurable. Um, but I, you know, these two things marry together to make all of the work happen. And I think this is just a way for us to be able to elevate the internal system as much as the external system of education all coming together. So it's outside the box for sure, um, but I, I just think that this is a way that we can bring both systems together.
Me, it's a, it's a collaborative thing. So that we ought to collaborate with each other to bring the best possible outcomes. So, can we change the culture inside the Department of Ed? I doubt it. But can we do a better job of collaborating with each other so that the outcomes that we want are ensured? Just for, just for a discussion.
I mean, as I hear Cass talk about this, to me. It, it's, it, it is the, I would say. It's usually the um, responsibility of a board of an organization to have that oversight. And advisory role with the staff, right, with the executive director and the staff at some level. I think with us, it's a little harder to do, just again, as you said, because of our, the way our, our roles work. But I certainly think there's an opportunity to look at how we can be working alongside Director Snow. And the division uh, staff to really help promote this and make sure that, you know, I, I think it's. I, I think it makes sense to align that so that they can be best prepared to then help carry out the work of the Department of Ed. At the same time, Brian, I hear you and I say, I don't know how we technically evaluate and oversee that. Um, I think there would have to definitely be some changes and, and. And then as I just look at the two different goals, the second one about the Board of Ed and our role. I think that's sort of outlined in our.
Expectations.
Expectations, yeah, when we sign on to, but I mean, not that it's not a good reminder to put it in front of us more frequently. And, and you know, to focus on it, so um, I don't know if there's a way to incorporate some of the. Uh, empowerment and um, support of, of that. Department of Ed goal. Um, but to me, you're right, when you need, when you have a goal, it's like, how do we measure it? So, kinda talked all the way around all those. But I see the point, but I don't know how, I mean, let's we make some changes.
Yeah, obviously we might have a close collaboration, but is it our role to. Try to manage the Department of Ed? And how they go about their business? I, I don't think so. Thomas, you have any insight for us on this? Are we, are we in bounds or out of bounds or scrambling the line?
Manage, no, directly, but shape or mold the work indirectly through the convening power and the power to interrogate folks. When they're presenting to you and the power to ask questions about rulemaking or uh, proposed contested case decisions. I think that that's where the, the influence is, it's. Not direct line of control influence, but transactional influence through your power to convene and interrogate. It's, it's hard to do in other states, other states where the state board appoints the chief. That would be a different discussion, but since uh, the chief state school officer and all of you all are independently appointed. And Senate confirms, that sits alone. The line of authority is. It's not direct and it's more, more transactional based on shared work.
Plus, I think we can control the alternate goal five. Because those are things that we do and I, I don't know how you all feel, but. There've been several meetings over the past year or so where I think. We've either been challenged or we are challenged to. Be prepared, participate, learn and grow, do our jobs and. I got thinking instead of. Instead of trying to promote. A vibrant work culture where I don't work. And I don't think my opinion about that is any good. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the. I, nobody's ever said anything to me about this, there's problems, morale or. Lack of recognition or lack of performance or lack of skill at all in the DOE. I mean, I frankly rely on all you guys to try to do what I do, but. It was during that thought process that made me turn this back to us and elevate it to a goal. Maybe we don't need it, but I think this is a good conversation to have. I, I don't think it would always be a goal. I would hope not. But that's, that's why I, I came at it from a accountability standpoint of our group. Working in collaboration, like Mike said, as opposed to. Managing, I mean, I kinda did take it like managing. DOE and I, I'm not qualified. There's, there's people that do that. Starting with the director. And. I don't know, I can be talked out about as opposed to having.
I think I'd be interested to see, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna just offer this again, it, it wasn't coming from a place of managing the Department of Education or managing the staff. Um, really, the thought process here came from aligning the Board of Education with. The great work and value that comes from the staff supporting us and providing us what we need to be successful. Um, we as a board collaborate with the staff in order for us to do the work. So to me, it, this, and it wasn't thinking about that. So when I hear you, Brian, say, um, you know, trying to imagine, manage an issue or that there was something. Something within the department, that wasn't the thought process at all. This was um, thinking about us being aligned as a board and supporting success within the department. Um, and this to me was a way for the Board of Education to say, back to the department. We are in this together, so this is our collaborative way and there, and in thinking through this. These were two easy ways as a Board of Education in my mind, that we could align with them and say. We as a board want you to be able to be successful. So as a board, we can say, we want you to be able to achieve education and build your skills because we are the Department of Education. So we should support you being able to enhance your skills, knowledge and capabilities because we're all about education. So as a board, we should support our staff being able to enhance their education. And then we should, we should celebrate that, we should celebrate them being able to find innovation in their work. And so it wasn't about managing it, it was about supporting the opportunity to align it with our work. So, and that in turn should create a vibrant work culture. So that was the thought, thought process was just aligning it with where we were and recognizing it.
There've been times, I think, and, and I haven't experienced this in the last twelve years, but there have been times, I think, when. The board and the department were adversarial, uh, or there were members who came with preconceived notions about what the. What was wrong with the Department of Ed. And uh, I don't think that exists, I think, we really have a nice relationship and I think it is collaborative. But historically, there have been those times in which there were adversarial things going on and board members did not support the department. I'm not sure we need this, but I'm, I'm certainly for this idea of collaboration, the idea that we're working together to achieve things for kids in Iowa. That's what it's about. And if we need to say that, do you think we need to say that, it's okay, but for me, from my perspective. Uh, the board ought to tell us, or the department ought to say, hey, you guys, let's work together. If they see a problem with the board, tell them, tell me if we're doing something that is anti. You know, cooperative, then tell us that and let's work on that. But I haven't heard that from the department that, that we are adversarial with each other. I think we, I think we're pretty good shape, we're in a pretty good place where we are right now. So, again, if we need to say collaborate, I'm, I'm for that.
And I just, and Mike, I know I'm interrupting you, but I just wanna say this again, because as those words are getting out there, I don't want that to be the message that's attached to this goal. Again, it was just as a strategist in my mind. It seemed clear to me that we were missing something by all of our goals being external to supporting the educational system. And that we didn't have something to balance supporting the internal system that makes this all work. So, I just felt like we needed something to support the entire system of education as we looked comprehensively at our strategy. That it didn't seem like we could have four goals supporting the system without having something that balanced. Our internal mechanism, which is a significant part of our work, so.
But I think I heard today that the department has. Is on all fours with our first four goals. That, that.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that correctly, so I mean, that's. That, I think, I think that tells me more than any words I could write. We are thoughtful, I think, Mike, I mean, that, you're right, and, and if, if we share those.
Yeah. I like. Mike's, or excuse me, Brian's. Uh, goal five outcomes because they closely align with our expectations for board members. I would suggest for more consideration. That instead of uh. that instead of uh adopting Cass's proposed whole five is that we add a letter E under uh Brian's proposed outcomes that deal with something to collaborate closely with the Department of Ed to to ensure whatever. So that we get the that collaboration. I I'm not sure we can manage and I and I I do agree with Cass that obviously if the Department of Ed is not functioning well, we're not going to be functioning. Because we we rely on that for for more consideration, I would maybe just adopt something like Brian has proposed, but add a letter E that deals with collaborate, working with the Department of Ed.
And maybe, and I and I appreciate those comments and maybe E would actually be the bolded goal of number five.
My what?
Be the the goal that's bolded in number five without the outcomes.
So the number five that promotes a vibrant work culture, that one would be the E.
And maybe you have the word for collaboration.
Yeah, so the bolded part would be the the one that you're saying go under.
Collaborate closely with DOE to promote a vibrant work.
That makes sense.
Awesome. Yeah, awesome. I like that.
I think that we should also maybe consider, um, and maybe this, maybe that just solves that, but I think that, you know, the department just, you know, underwent an alignment. And so we, and so I think that with that maybe um, I don't know if it needs to be a goal or an outcome, but just kind of how is that going and kind of reporting back to the board? Um, you know, I know that that's something that different agencies talk about a lot and I know that from, you know, I mean, it's just kind of so I think that as you're going, I mean, it'd be nice to just see like, how's it going? How is morale? I don't know, like, how are things changing? So I think that just having a standing report on what's happening with, I mean, because, I mean, just because realignment happened on July 1st doesn't mean it's done, right? I mean, it's still happening. It probably will be happening for the next couple of years. So just kind of, and I'm not saying it needs to be a goal or anything, but I think it's important for us to know how the department's doing after this huge change.
I just, as I exit the doors, I walk out the door, I just want the department to know what profound respect I have for them. And all the things and all the people that have worked and worked so hard to make education excellent in Iowa. I just want them to know that. And I and I like the collaboration thing because it says that's our responsibility to figure out how we can do a better job of supporting these people. I had some preconceived notions about the apartment when I came in. It probably were unfair. But I've earned or learned a profound respect for these people and all the things that they do and how hard they were to please us, but most importantly, to help the kids in the state life. And I just need to say that to you. So collaboration, collaborate, keep it, we keep doing this. And I think we're doing a good job of that, but I'm I'm good with adding that. I think that's a good, that's a good book.
So would you like to restate what you're suggesting is for outcome?
Actually, Brian.
Brian nailed it, I think. Well, I I just added E, collaborate closely with DOE to promote a vibrant work culture within the DOE. We're all filled valued, engaged and empowered to achieve our strategic goals. You okay with that?
And I defer to the board on its goals. I I do not have concerns about that now. Thank you. And and I um, a-again, just to to return, um, for member halls to to some of your comments. I do, I just want to enter the frame of the intent, which in discussion with our member halls was to demonstrate investment in the department team that supports the board, which I know that the team and I uh very much so appreciate. And then and then Vice President Axiotis, to your point about realignment, um, or or the impact of alignment. Um, we recently provided a presentation to the House Appropriations Committee, um, including a significant update on alignment. We had it on the agenda uh for this conversation. We did not have enough time on the agenda. So if that's something that you would like to see in an April or May board meeting, happy to provide um a a more significant overview of the impact.
That'd be great. And I think that that's probably something that we want to see every poll meeting.
Yes, are you okay with that uh suggestion?
Yes. And hopefully we'll carry forward the keeping forward or keep the outcomes that we have noted here in mind as just thoughts for the staff of how we want to see or things that they can think about for things they can do. So thank you all for such great discussion. I'm glad that we carried it forward. I'm glad this became a goal for the board and um, just great ways to grow. So good discussion.
Okay. Kim, do you have enough notes for us?
I do. I can make all the the adjustments as discussed.
So I would, I would ask for a motion to approve the goals with the suggested changes. Then by Mary?
Second.
Second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor and Kate by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried, rules are adopted. All right. Revision of Iowa academic standards for mathematics.
Morning, everyone. We're excited to be here to present the revision of the Iowa academic standards for mathematics. I am April Fordsen. I am the K-12 mathematics consultant at the department. I will now pass the presentation over to Jody to introduce the rest of our team.
I'm Jody Vanderloo. I am the elementary mathematics consultant at the Department of Education. Um, a couple of people that we'd like to acknowledge who have been a big part of this work, um, Tom Wood, who is the bureau chief of the Bureau of Learner Strategies and Sport. And of course, Dr. Varianic, who is the division administrator, have also been a big part of this work.
So a brief history of the Iowa academic standards. In two thousand and five, Senate File three forty-five allowed for voluntary high school standards and mathematics. This also applies to other content areas, but for the scope of this conversation, we're only going to address mathematics this morning. Then in two thousand and eight, Senate File twenty-two sixteen made high school standards mandatory for all students. In two thousand and ten, we adapted the Iowa Core Mathematics Standards. And then in two thousand and thirteen, Executive Order eighty-three required a regular review of the standards with transparency in the process through public public forums and surveys during the review phase. Next, we have Iowa Legislative Code two fifty-six point seven, duties of the State Board. The State Board shall, as it states in subsection twenty-six A, adapt rules mandating a core curriculum and graduation criteria for all students requiring at least four years of English, three years of mathematics, three years of science and three years of social studies. Then in subsection twenty E, it says, adopt rules mandating for content standards for reading mathematics and science. We further have chapter twelve, which gives a description of the required components for the mathematics standards in grades K five, six, eight and nine twelve. Back to Jody.
Um, so as April mentioned, um, the executive order eighty-three requires a transparent review process with public involvement. And on this slide, you can see the timeline that we had used um, while we worked through the standards revision process. Um, starting back in November of two thousand and twenty-two, um, was phase one, the preparation phase where we um, internally got things ready by notifying communications, establishing a budget. And a big part of the preparation preparation was establishing a revision team. That revision team included forty members from different stakeholder groups. We had twelve um representatives that were either elementary teachers, administrators or consulting teachers, sixteen from the secondary level, six from higher education and five that were area education consultants. We then moved to phase two with that team of forty members. Um, they met six times in person and multiple times um online uh with grade level teams um, to create the proposed revised draft that was used for stakeholder feedback. In January, we moved to phase three where we collected stakeholder feedback. Um, we started by providing information via the department website and social media and also the mathematics newsletter to um seek public input. The first, um, one of the big ways that we sought input was to put out a public survey. It was open for thirty days and we had three hundred and seventy-two individuals respond to the survey, providing feedback about the proposed standards. We have five in public listening sessions, um, four in the quadrants, four quadrants of the state and one in Des Moines, where we invited individuals to come and provide feedback in person. We have three online focus group discuss discussions where we sought um answers to questions that we had. And then we also solicited um feedback from national experts. We moved to phase four in February where we took all of that data and all of that feedback that we um that we received and we created a new review team, a revision team of twenty-three members. Again, with a broad stakeholder um inclusion, we had five elementary representatives, six secondary representatives, three from higher education, three AEA consultants, three parents and three community partners. And the work of that team, they met uh once in person and two virtually um to propose, create the final draft that was put forward to you today. Um, and so we are now today officially in phase five, where we are presenting the first read to you at the state board. And it sounds like not May ninth, we'll be coming back April twenty-six to do the second reading and vote for approval. Um, some things that you might need to know about the standards. Um, they are based on what we call the three shifts in mathematics. And these three shifts are commonly accepted and used in the mathematical field and have been accessible through many uh um outside resources. And an intentional effort was made by the team to include this work within the document for ease of use. So educators do not have to go to multiple outside resources, that everything we need is contained within uh the standards document. The first shift of mathematics is the shift of focus, where we are prioritizing the major work of each grade level. And we also identify supporting an additional work. And the major work of the grade level shouldn't should entail up to eighty-five percent of instructional time. So we're helping to identify for educators, um, what is where the majority of their time should be spent. So there are three levels of focus, um, major work, supporting work and additional work. The second um shift of mathematics is coherence. And coherence really ensures that standards are built upon each other within a grade level and then year after year. Um, there it includes that there could be consequences for students if certain standards were skipped or omitted um, that a student might have difficulty in successful years. So can coherence ensures that students receive all the instruction they need to have a complete mathematical history. Um, the third aspect or the third shift of mathematics is the aspect of rigor, which clarifies um, the recommended level of uh rigor that is required for each standard. And there are three levels of rigor, conceptual understanding, procedural skill and fluency and application. And these three levels of rigor really need to be balanced in a well-rounded educational um set of standards. Um, we think of it as a three-legged stool. If one of those legs was missing or was shorter, it would be wobbly and it wouldn't provide a good solid foundation for our students. So great um intention was included in the standards to identify the level of level of rigor to help educators understand more fully what needs to be taught. Another big part of our standards are the standards of mathematical practice. We have always had eight standards of mathematical practice, which are kind of the habits of mind or the ways of knowing that we want students to engage with mathematics. Um, the revised vision, revision of the mathematics standards went deeper than just the eight. We um provided in this revision, grade level descriptors of these eight things so that there is an elementary, middle grades and high school descriptors of what these eight things would look like at the different grade levels. And then we also provided some bundling. Um, for example, um communicating reasoning is one of the bundles that would include practice three and practice six. It's a way for educators to have a smaller group of um, things to look at when they're they're considering how to teach the standards with their students. So kind of an overview of the document changes. The first thing that everyone notices is that we have moved to a table on that. It's no longer an outline or narrative. This was um very intentional in order to create an ease of reading um for the for the user. We've identified that level of focus that I just mentioned. In this example, uh, it is a major cluster, so it is major work of the grade. We have identified the level of rigor right here in the table. So um you can see that this is one this kindergarten standards has procedural or conceptual rigor that is identified. And then we've also identified the standards of mathematical practice bundling, which um have three, communicating reasoning, problem solving or modeling and data analysis. Another thing that was very intentional in the work of the team was to take all of the footnotes um, from the previous version and include them within the text of the standards. Um, so that 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 information wasn't being lost or overlooked. It's embedded right within the standards. Some of the changes or the highlights to the elementary revisions. Um, a lot of the revisions were made to adjust the language for clarity and understanding of the standards. Um, kindergarten, we added some counting backwards standards um based on uh data analysis and feedback from the field. In kindergarten and first grade, we added time and money standards. Um, they currently uh did not have any time or money standards. It first appeared in second grade. And so we provided some scaffolding up to that second grade standard. Um, throughout the document, we defined fluency as flexible, efficient and accurate. Of course, we want students to be correct and fast, but we also want students to be flexible in their thinking and have multiple ways to solve problems. We also included the language use an algorithm, including the standard algorithm or other methods to help um educators in the field understand that the standard algorithm is still a goal, but there are other algorithms that may be acceptable.
Okay, thank you, Jody. So now we're going to talk about the middle school um highlights. And so um in sixth grade, we incorporated technology for handling complex cases aligning to the NAEP language. In eighth grade, we were able to include cube roots for bases one through five and ten. Moving on to high school, we had several changes here as well. And so firstly, we divided our standards into model courses. For Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. It's important to note that the distribution of the standards represents about one-third of the content in each year. Not necessarily the number of standards because not, standards are all different sizes. We did have a reduction, so we did make a space in high school and we'll talk more about that shortly. This restructuring provides a more streamlined approach to curriculum planning and implementation. Next, we reorganized the standards beyond college and career readiness. In the previous version, those were incorporated in with the required and those were never intended to be required for all pathways. So we pulled those out. And that reorganized placement, um, we put them in the forces that are beyond the the um college and career readiness level. So these would be in courses beyond Algebra Two. These standards have been moved and ensuring um it, but it, we still can ensure the students are adequately prepared for advanced course work. The next one is retaining the conceptual categories. Despite the current changes, we've retained the conceptual categories of numbers and quantity, algebra. Function, geometry, statistics, and probability. Conceptual categories ensure continuity and consistency in our framework. Additionally, as Jody previously mentioned, we highlighted the major work of the grade. So we're providing those indicators to educators in the field. Here is the biggest, big career, but the most critical content for our college and career readiness definition. Identifying the major clusters helps educators prioritize those critical changes in skills. Ensuring or concepts and skills ensuring students focus on essential concepts. We also added course indicators to the standards. This allows the educators, when they look at the standards, to know which courses we place them in. So there's no guessing there, we just simply put it in the taxonomy. Furthermore, some of our standards appeared in both Algebra One and Algebra Two courses. When that happened, instead of putting examples on there that might arbitrarily set curriculum boundaries. We didn't want to do that, so we put an indicator that hopefully this may be in their Algebra One or their Algebra Two. Those differences will really flesh out in curriculum differences. One is not better than the other, it can be in Algebra One or Algebra Two, just depending on the pathway that your curriculum chose to go through the standards. Lastly, we are thrilled to announce the development of new standards for three advanced mathematics courses. Statistics and Probability, Pre-Calculus and Calculus. These standards will provide a comprehensive framework for teaching these standards and ensuring students receive rigorous. And thorough education in advanced mathematics. Next, we are excited to talk about our high school pathways. Now, I'm going to give you just a second to take this graphic in. And we'll go ahead and start on the left-hand side. You will notice, as Director Snow previously mentioned, these are career paths. We just put three here, so one was really thinking around what would that look like for all of our careers? And the second one is our life sciences, social sciences, healthcare, business, and technical careers. You'll notice in these first two pathways, that the courses for the first three course sequence is the same. And that is intentional because those bundlings of those standards are what we just talked about. Within the previous standard, so we took all of the required standards, we put them into three piles. And those formed our Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. Where these two pathways differentiate is in the fourth year. The first one is often thought of more of a quantitative reasoning pathway, and the second one is more of a statistical pathway. So these two pathways really allow the opportunity for students to decide after they've had that required foundation. Which pathway of interest they want to go down. The other thing you'll see are some dash lines there. That also allows students in Pathways One and Two to decide, you know what? I do want to become an engineer or physical and physical science careers. They can jump on to that fourth pathway by taking a semester or summer, bridge, or pre-calculus course. So we like to think of those as two on-ramps for students. So now let's talk about the third pathway. The third pathway you'll notice is different than the first two pathways, beginning with the third course. So what that third course does is that would be all of the required standards that we spelled out. And additionally, it would be some of that content that we talked about. That was originally incorporated that we pulled out and we placed strategically more appropriate where it would go in a progression. So and then you'll see that pathway is really the one that leads to calculus. Students in that pathway could also decide to get on one of the previous pathways. By just taking a different math course, or switching at the end of their sophomore year. So they could get into an Algebra Two course without those additional concepts if they so choose. Chose to. The other thing is that we want, we spelled this out for the AGA series, which is thought to be. A discrete series. It could also be done with integrated, so we could have integrated one, two, and three content. As long as it's addressing the same standards and that same foundation that we want all students to have, then those could be interchangeable. Be interchangeable. And with that, we'll conclude our presentation and we look forward to feedback and collaboration moving forward. Thank you for your attention. And we would like to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
So, oh, not a math person, but. You're right, thank you, thank you for reminding me, you're right, nobody says, I don't like to read, mom. So, math, very important. One question I have, having been involved with the STEM initiative, is the importance of algebra starting in eighth grade. So I just want to, I'm sure you had some questions about that, can you just help me understand that? And then the second one is even farther back in elementary school, as we've started incorporating computer science at elementary. Where does that computational thinking come in, in the standards?
So for the first one, repeat the first one again, I'm sorry.
Algebra at eighth grade, especially for those engineering and higher order careers.
So when we look at the pathways, any of these pathways could be tightened up to be started in middle school. So they would just start the pathway earlier.
And the access in the middle school, I mean, are your eighth grade educators prepared for Algebra One?
It varies on the district. If they're offering it for Algebra One, any K E teacher could offer Algebra One. Where the difference would come down to is if they want it for high school credit, and that's up to local board decision.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, is that, where's that? Thanks, okay, and.
And then computation, the elementary grade starts as early as kindergarten. We have identified grade level fluencies for each grade level, K through six. So beginning in kindergarten, adding and subtracting within five. It grows to add and subtract within ten in first grade, add and subtract within twenty in second grade, and so on and so forth. So we start that computation very early and grow and progress throughout the grade.
And then that leads into kind of more of that if-then kind of logic.
Anytime you would see the mathematical modeling indicators that for the SMP bundles. That's a good spot to look for computational thinking, so that's the connection there.
Thank you.
And then just to add a little bit to, for me to each, April was important comment. So these math pathways that are aligned, course pathways that are aligned to career pathways are intended to be informational. So as she indicated, it could start at eighth grade or whenever a student was ready. But it's intended to provide information to educators, to families, to students. On what math would be expected in different career pathways.
Right, and this is that broad, this is what we expect every high school graduate to know. Or have an experience throughout that continuum of their K-12 education, not. They get it here, they get it here in this way and that trackway, so. I know that's important to emphasize because it's like, well, what class is that, or what curriculum, you know, what would I be learning? So that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Is it fair to say that be much more difficult for a student on a career pathway, taking Algebra Two? The first example that you give here, just now, I decided in my senior year that I'd like to take. Calculus or statistics or whatever, but isn't the rigor bottom. Much more extensive than it would be at the top, in other words. It's fair to say, I hope it's fair to say that schools teach that at a different level, just like they do in college. And chemistry for a astronomy major may be different than for a pre-med major, is that, is that right?
So the rigor could vary from, from different, different schools and experiences.
And that's what I'm saying, is it realistic to expect a kid to go from Algebra Two, not in class with folks that are just general. I'm not a math guy either, I'm a social studies guy, you guys are the smart ones. But I'm pretty sure I'd have a hard time moving from Algebra Two to get to calc or pre-calculus.
That's why we had the dash line, so we're not saying that you can skip that concept and step into calculus. Some students will be able to. Pre-calculus, which is actually a course that was added, is kind of like pre-algebra, a remedial course, right? So the intent was, so if they don't get those trick concepts or that, those pre-calculus, some of the higher level polynomial work. Then they'll pick it up in that bridge course.
You hope.
I hope.
That's right, thank you.
And for them to remain to your point, that's why it was critical for the team to identify the level of rigor for each standard. And that's why we have in the, in the level of focus as well. That's why we have major supporting and additional work articulated within.
Yeah, that would be my second question, do we have the same level of support? That we do for read, I mean, we all know how important it is to read in about a third grade if you're not there. We really have intensive interventions so that we can get you up to speed. Do you do the same thing in math, I mean, is there that kind of support, that level of support for kids who are struggling?
We try, we try to mirror it for literacy. You know, of course, we don't have some of the same legislation or some of the same funding, so we, we are very creative in how to do those things. To do the same things as literacy, with, without some of those.
And how do we disseminate that, I mean, how does that, how do we get from top to bottom on that?
For then, the information out to the.
For a second grader or third grader, I mean, how do we get the interventions that we need? How do we buy schools to help with that?
So we're doing a lot of professional development in the summer with districts and leaders in mathematics. In understanding the standards and how to teach them. And part of that understanding how to teach the standards is how to help students who may be struggling or excel students who may be in reaching. And so April and I providing support and professional learning to teams along the way.
And we've had a digital, for the last about five years, we've had some professional development modules that we've made available. To schools and the AEA's that really help with student building number sense, but with the educator being. Building their own number sense, because oftentimes, right, educators can't give away what they don't possess. So we want them to have that, that confidence, right, in their number sense. And we would just say this, when an educator has number sense themselves, they'll do the different strategies. Just so much better, I mean, they'll do it, it'll be a different number, you'll be able to see the difference between it, you know. And so we've done that and we've made that available widely. And it's asynchronous learning, we've done that, we've done, also, we have modules that we put out, we often have webinars to do, so we.
And he does that too, right, the AEA's have done that.
Yes, yes, and we work often in partnership, we've bundled it with licensure credit in the past. So that's been a great incentive. We've even been some of the instructors on the courses is part of our job to kind of get that going, so.
Thank you for doing, thank you.
Yes, and just to be clear, we're not lowering the rigor on any of the standards that are in there. We've just reorganized where the content shows up in the.
Thank you, thanks again.
What kind of participation did you get in your public sessions?
So we had, it was, we actually had the very unfortunate event of that weather. For those two weeks and all the ice and the fog and the, so our sessions fell right in the middle of that. We had a handful in Des Moines, a handful in Cedar Falls. And then we didn't have anybody else in any of the other ones.
And what kind of folks attended?
Educators, high school, high school teachers came to the one in Cedar Falls. The one in Des Moines was mixed.
And their comments, were they favorable?
Oh, they were excited.
Yeah, I'm excited about this too.
Yes, we've had a great review so far.
Yeah, and then physics, I know is probably more of a science-based. Conceptual understanding and learning, where does, is that in our science curriculum? I know there's, it's often math-based as well, was that in any part of your discussions?
The science, the science will come in through the mathematical modeling. Is while some of those problems. I know our colleague that's like, or read them as science, he'll be like, that's a science problem, I'm like, that's mathematical modeling in a science context, so. It's in there.
Okay, yes, thank you. I'll just say one more thing to my personal level, my daughter through high school was always a language arts person. And by the time she got to her senior year, she took a statistics course. And she has a master's in statistics, so it changed her entire perspective of math. And I was appreciative that the school district that she attended offered that. So I'm really happy to see these pathways as extensive as they are, so thank you for that work.
And not the calculus-only pathway as it has been, so we definitely wanted to call out the quantitative reasoning and the statistics. Because we are seeing a national trend in that direction, yeah, so we want, we wanted to allow those opportunities as.
Good point.
And for the question to your point about participation, I think that this is obviously a process that has not been run in a number of years. So we feel it's important to provide in-person opportunities for public comment in addition to the publicly available. And statewide available survey. I think moving forward for ELA standards and our science standards will also provide hybrid options for participation. And they've gotten feedback that that will further increase our whole feedback, that would be a great addition.
Just make one more comment, my concern too has been elementary education degrees with a math. With a math, what do we say, addition? Endorsement, thank you, the word escaped me for a moment, so. In your view, is that, is that a problem? We have these teachers now teaching algebra in the eighth grade. Who really have a math endorsement, not a, not a degree, not even a minor in math. But in fact, are given the responsibility of doing that, and we know how desperate sometimes we get for math teachers. Is that a problem, is that something you have to address?
April mentioned that, providing that professional learning for educators to help grow their mathematical understanding for elementary teachers. I also think it comes through the work with pre-service educators and how we're preparing our teachers to teach.
But are we doing it, I'm not, I'm not being critical of you, please, you understand that, I'm just saying, are we doing that? I mean, are we preparing those kids, are they actually going to, to professional development? And improving their ability to communicate as well as teach these skills. Do you think they are?
I, I would say it depends on, on the teacher, you know, I would, I would. I did teach in middle school, sixth through eighth grade, and I taught along some sides of people that didn't have. A full math degree like I did, and they were amazing, I would, so it's just hard, it depends, I think.
I'm concerned there are situations there that really do put kids at risk in terms of moving up on that, that math thing, but thank you so much.
Yeah, one, one other thing we've done is we've had a great, we've been able to build up our newsletter. We, we get it to almost every school in the, in the state, though we've been able to build that up. So we have a great communication delivery method that, to get that information out, so they're definitely aware.
I think I only have one, one question or a thought, or how, how does this overlay with dual credit? Or AP classes, or how does that carry forward?
Great question, so in the pathways, the standards that we wrote for the courses, we used a lot of the models. We tried to triangulate the data to actually come up with our standards as far as we looked at IB, we looked at AP. We looked at other states such as Massachusetts, as their student achievement is very good. And so what I would say about our standards is they may be a subset of an AP. We didn't provide that guidance, we really wrote standards to be a high school course that is not for dual enrollment. Not necessarily for dual enrollment, not necessarily for AP. So we just felt that there was a space for that, and we know some schools do offer that, like the statistics course. But they don't do it for AP or dual enrollment, right? So we wanted to provide guidance there, but they would be, they would be close to the other models. They would, they would align nicely.
Couple of comments, Mike, you were talking about additional assistance for students, there is Title I math still available. That's cool, can use. Comment that I, what I really enjoyed reading about was the shift of focus and prioritizing major work. That really rang a bell for me, so I was like, alright, that's, that's good stuff. Um, that really rang a bell for me, so I was like, all right, that's, that's good stuff. When we look at the process, so we're not making any motion today. This is just information for us today. What happens between now and our next meeting in April? Is it just kind of sits on the shelf until we take action? Or is there anything else that's going on with these standards in the meantime?
Well, I think um our thought was that we would present them today. And then I believe if you have any feedback or concerns, you'll make those that information known to Director Snow. Who will pass it along to us and then will work to address those concerns. And then hope when we come back the next time, we're in the position for an adoption.
And and this does provide a final opportunity in addition to the expert focus groups, the public comment survey, the listening sessions. The subsequent expert focus groups were yet another opportunity for public comment. Um, both in writing uh and verbally at this and the next board meeting.
Yeah. Anything else for our mathematical experts?
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just a preview of coming attractions. We're gonna. Uh, go with the next agenda item with rules and then we will take a break before we get to the appeal decision.
Members of the board, um Director Snow. Here to present three rules chapters after those three rules chapter or through ma- three rulemaking documents. After those are presented, I'll storyboard out the next couple of steps in the rulemaking process, including the rules that you will see. Uh, you are most likely to see at your main meeting. So the first item is chapters twenty-one and twenty-four. This is the community college accreditation. It consolidates two chapters into one. There was a lot of overlapping content between those two chapters. It consolidates them into one, streamlining, no need to restate the same definition twice. Uh, there was no public comment at either of the hearings. However, the subject matter experts at the department identified some additional flexibility that could be provided to community colleges. As they hire arts and sciences staff. The purpose of Executive Order ten is to provide additional flexibility and we found some, the or the subject matter experts, not a sign. Uh, that additional flexibility is highlighted on the back of the executive summary. Uh, with strike-throughs. Uh, the rulemaking document itself, since it's a repeal and replace. It's an entirely new chapter. It won't have those strike-throughs in it, but I gave you the strike-through so that you could see the changes that staff opposes. In arts and sciences, uh, the Higher Learning Commission had set forth the requirements that are struck through. The Higher Learning Commission has since. For lack of a better term, and because I'm not fully caffeinated yet, backed off of those requirements. And so the subject matter experts suggested incorporating arts and sciences faculty qualifications from the Iowa code. By reference to two sixty C forty-eight, which contains state statute on arts and sciences faculty qualifications. This will provide a little more flexibility on the margins for community colleges to hire the right people to teach arts and sciences courses. With that, I am open for questions regarding chapters twenty-one and twenty-four.
The uh Community College Council met yesterday and. And gave their okay to to move it forward as Thomas presented it. Basically, the changes came from the Higher Learning Council, right?
The Higher Learning Commission sort of deferred to defer to states. Uh, rather than imposing their requirements, my my understanding is do what your state would do.
Any questions regarding chapters twenty-one and twenty-four? You want to take these separately, Thomas?
Um, yeah, so it would be this one rulemaking package as chapter one, separate votes at each.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? So moved by Cindy, second by Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Follow the same sign. Motion's carried. Chapter forty-six.
This chapter is uh on career and technical education. Um, no public comment was received. Nobody attended the public hearings on chapter forty-six. However, again, s- staff and subject matter experts. Found some additional opportunities for flexibility in the career and academy incentive fund competitive grant process. And uh those additional flexibilities are in strike-throughs and underlines in the back of your executive summary. Uh, this, this additional flexibility uh allowed the department, would allow the department. In future grant cycles to consider more for uh different types, different configurations of. Career academies. Uh, the big thing that was noticed is the very last sentence that has been struck through. Uh, a second priority proposal uh will receive funding of not less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And uh some of the applicants in this most recent grant cycle said, we don't need that much money to do what we want. So why, why force money that folks don't need if the grant is otherwise competitive? And it can be done for two hundred thousand or uh one hundred thousand. Because of strong partnerships in o- other resources and philanthropy. Great. Um, so that is the, that is the proposal from staff during the Community College Council. There was some discussion of why is it a maximum and a minimum of a million dollars? That's an artifact from the Iowa code. Uh, Laura Vargas and uh refresh my recollection. She gave me the code citation. Um, but the will not exceed one million and no less than one million. Those are um artifacts for of Iowa code for first priority grants. That might be subject to code cleanup at a later time. But the one thing that is within the department's control is that that mandatory minimum award amount for second priority grants. And that's the, the mandatory minimum that the subject matter experts propose striking. So with that, and again, the Community College Council with that understanding in Laura Vargas and's expert explanation of why this is. Why this is one million and one million is an artifact of code. The Community College Council recommended uh approval of this rules package.
Tom, there's this one, would you answer this question? Maybe this is off-base, but what responsibility to grant? Uh, receivers, ren, what, what responsibility to have to report back to us and say, hey, this is what we did. And this is how successful we worked. Is there a, is there a mechanism for that? Do you look at that or does someone else in the department look at that?
Um, there is a reporting mechanism that's built into the competitive grant. Uh, there's, of course, the audits of use of funds. Um, I'm going to, again, this is a sub-rule part of a broader rule.
But that, and again, that's just curiosity on my part more than anything about this.
So forty-six thirteen is the rule on career inside of career academy incentive funds. Um, application proposals, program instruction. So there will be reporting back actual or estimated enrollment, um, approved contracts. There's uh some external checks uh on awarding grants, distributing and monitoring their implementation. So the broader rule has that what you asked for.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I I have one, Thomas, could. The the million dollar number is in the code, but the two hundred and fifty thousand is not.
Correct.
So what if we just struck all of it and let the code by itself tell us? What the limit is. Then if they tweak it, which they're likely to at some point, we don't have to mess with the rule.
You know, and that was.
We've talked about this.
Had kind of that.
It's the same as the Turner School stuff. Why do you repeat all the law?
Again, say a grant award issued under this rule will not exceed the amount and.
Great, we could.
And yes, it's consistent with the notice of intended action. It's um, the reason that the code language was there rather than referencing the underlying statute is. Was because of the mandatory minimum for second priorities. So it's within the um, the board's authority, consistent with the notice of intended action, consistent with Executive Order ten. Uh, does not change the substance. Um, if that be the will of the board, I will uh make that correction and uh. Before I file the rules next week.
I'm I'm fine with that. With that, I recommend the, or woo that we recommend the amendment to chapter forty-six, second.
Move by Brian, sent by Mike. Any further discussions? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Follow the same sign. Motion's carried. Chapter one oh three.
So then the metric for what rules go on the consent agenda versus what rules or action items. Is either there was a substantive change or there was a public comment. Here, there was a public comment and a rather substantial public comment and public comment that I might personally have sympathy with. Is a private citizen, but the public comment makes asks that exceed the um authority. That the department and the state board have under the underlying statute. Uh, the ask was additional reporting requirements, additional investigation. Um, aligning the rules with a settlement agreement that the, that a particular district entered into. With the US Department of Justice. All may be good public policy, but it is within the constraints of Iowa code section two eighty point twenty-one. That this board operates. Uh, in my judgment, those are, no matter how good the ideas are. Uh, they are outside of the um constraints of the underlying statute. Additionally, many of these asks were considered during the recent negotiated rulemaking in twenty nineteen. That resulted in new, the, a new chapter one oh three in twenty twenty. These discussions were freshly had as part of negotiated rulemaking. So uh, there's other vehicles to get these changes made, legislative correction. Or uh a renewed and refreshed uh negotiated rulemaking where these changes might be built by consensus. So with that, the department's recommendation is to uh carefully consider those comments that make no substantive changes. And with that, I'm open for questions.
Questions for Thomas? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Moved by Brooke.
Second.
Senator Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposing. Motion's carries. Rulemaking.
And now just a brief update about what you'll see in your May meeting. You will see rulemaking on um. Uh, private instruction, uh, chapter thirty-one, that we were making received at my last stick camp, around eight hundred public comments. So many of them were were identical, but I'm, the subject matter experts and I are sorting through that. Those comments about what changes will or will not be made.
So private instruction homeschooling or?
Private instruction and private instruction homeschooling.
Okay.
So uh, instruction provided by parents or by accredited non-accredited schools.
Thank you.
Um, a parallel rule with some overlapping content is the senior year plus rules chapter, chapter twenty-two. There was a provision in that that intersected with chapter thirty-one about uh students in homeschooling. One can they, one can they take concurrent enrollment courses and how many may they take, may they take? That was the issue that was subject to the contested case that you decided earlier this morning on your consent agenda based on. Failure to timely appeal. Um, that um, those two rule chapters, since they, they intersect at that point, will be considered together. And then the last rules package will be uh practitioner prep, chapter seventy-seven and seventy-nine. So those four chapters, three rulemaking packages, that will be your rules workload for your May meeting.
Thank you, Thomas. Ten forty-five, we'll take a break till ten fifty-five demonstration. We convene now? Alright, we're back. The next item on the agenda is the appeal decision.
Good morning, members of the board. Thomas Mays, uh, here in my capacity as general counsel to the Department of Education. Eric Henley filed a appeal of a school board decision adopting a policy, adopting a policy. Said policy is recited in the um findings of fact in the proposed decision that you have in your board packet. Um, Mr. Henley finally kindly filed an appeal of the school board decision. And he timely filed a notice of appeal of that proposed decision uh to you. Uh, in your board packet, you have in chronological order, the proposed decision, Mr. Henley's notice of appeal. That proposed decision, uh, and then some uh briefing orders that I made to keep the process moving forward. And setting some deadlines as well as the briefs and exceptions that the parties filed in response to that. Uh, to those orders. Uh, this matter is before you, under your authority. It under Iowa code section two ninety point one. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh the appellant and the council for the appellate. As well as Assistant Attorney General Tyler Eason. Uh, the order of operations is the appellant will have seven minutes, thirty seconds to of oral argument. The appellate will have an equal amount of time and then attorney, Assistant Attorney General Eason will present whatever. Uh, uh, statements that he may have, given the fact that this matter. Um, as a similar matter is currently pending on judicial review. So with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Henley to the board table. Uh, and uh, turn it over to him and the board for his allotted oral argument time.
Did you say it was seven minutes and thirty seconds?
Seven thirty, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, which is inclusive of any questions that you may have for either of the.
Okay, you may begin.
Good morning, members of the board. And as Mr. May said, my name is Eric Henley. But thank you for the opportunity to present my argument today. I'm here to challenge the constitutionality of Gilbert Community School District's board policies regarding photography and video recording in the school environment. The school district argues that there is not a First Amendment right to record in the school environment. However, the challenged policy states that it is essential that the district be able to photograph and record students in the school environment. In order to promote the value of public education. It is my observation that the school district has a practice of posting photographs and videos of students to its district-sponsored Facebook page. For the purpose of promoting the value of public education. In other words, the school district is using images and videos of students to publicly engage in political speech. But promoting the value of public education is not a viewpoint mutual purpose. The policy affords parents no opportunity to opt out of images and videos of their children being posted on Facebook. As such, this method of promoting the value of public education is compelled political speech. The United States Supreme Court thoroughly rejected the ability of schools to force students to participate in ideological speech. In the nineteen forty-three case, West Virginia State Board of Education versus Barnett. In that case, the Supreme Court found that schools could not compel students to salute the flag. If students cannot be compelled to salute the flag inside the school, then they certainly cannot be compelled to allow their name, image and likeness. To promote the school district's agenda on its publicly available Facebook page. The argument that there is no First Amendment right to record in a school environment also misses the point of my unbridled discretion claim. Enacting a policy that permits staff to either permit or deny recording by patrons on a case by case basis. The school district has created a right to record by granting this privilege to some. A policy banning all recording in a school environment would be both content and viewpoint neutral. However, these policies, which leave administrative officials to determine when it is permissible to record in a school environment. Failed to provide adequate protection against viewpoint discrimination. Is clearly established that viewpoint discrimination is unconstitutional on all forms. The school district also argues that the board was exercising discretion when it implemented the challenged policies. The Iowa Supreme Court addressed the discretionary power of school boards over one hundred and fifty years ago. In the eighteen sixty eight case Clark versus Board of School Directors. When integrated schools in Iowa eighty six years before Brown versus Board of Education. In Clark, the court stated. The Board of Directors is clothed with certain discretionary powers as to the establishment. Maintenance and management of schools within its district cannot be denied. However, it went on to state. This discretion is limited. By the line which fixes the equality of right in all use between the ages of five and twenty one years. No discretion which disturbs that equality can be exercised. For the exercise of such a discretion would be a violation of the law, which expressly gives the same rights to all youths. The challenged policies failed to provide adequate protection to ensure that all students will be afforded an equal opportunity to record in the school environment. Regarding my vagueness challenge, a government policy is unconstitutionally vague if it fails to provide adequate notice. Of the prescribed conduct and lends itself to arbitrary enforcement. This policy clearly. Lends itself to arbitrary enforcement and does not provide adequate notice of when it is permissible to record in the school environment and when it is not. So given that, I will welcome any questions from the board.
Yeah, questions for Mr. Henley. Mr. Henley, you were with us last year. When the board decided on this matter, is there's uh something significant that's changed from last year to this year regarding? Your request for an appeal?
That appeal was primarily focused on the ability of parents to record IEP meetings. As I mentioned last year before the board. The and in that in that meeting last year, the school district argued that it would violate the privacy of the staff. For them to be recorded during IEP meetings. The school district turned around two months after that meeting. And passed this policy, basically giving itself. As much right as it wants to post images and videos of students to its Facebook page. So I think there's a serious disconnect there between. It violates the privacy of staff for them to be video recorded, but apparently it doesn't violate the privacy of students for them to be video recorded by the staff and posted on the Facebook page.
Other questions for Mr. Henley? Hearing no other questions, thank you. And who is next, Thomas?
Um. Attorney Carrie Weber. And I believe she has been promoted to panelist.
Yes, can you, can you hear me? Excellent, okay. Good morning, thank you, it's good to be with you, uh my name is Carrie Weber, I represent the Gilbert Community School District, I'm a member of the Allers and Cooney Law Firm in Des Moines. Uh I just want to clarify some of the, I'm also here, I'm sorry, with uh my client, Dr. Christine Trujillo. Um it just in case there are any factual questions that she may be able to answer for you. Good morning. Um I want to provide a just a brief context of the procedural background of this matter and. The decision that you are faced with today as your attorney, uh Mr. May said, this is a two ninety appeal. Um last year, there was a two ninety appeal from a the board, the Gilbert Board's adoption of a previous. Recording policy um. It was not a, it did not involve the right of parents to record, in fact, the board specifically found that. Uh Mr. Henley could not raise an appeal to the State Board of Education regarding that issue. Um because it was not a decision that was made by the board, the decision that was made by the board was to adopt the policy. And that is the only uh decision upon which the state board can can either affirm or. Uh any other number of number of options, but that is the. Decision that's on appeal is the the board's decision to adopt that policy. So last year we were here, we had many questions about um some of the issues Mr. Henley raised, including whether there were appropriate. Um guidelines, if you will, for staff to decide who could record or not record. Um since we were here, Mr. Henley appealed the board's um. Affirmance of that policy to the Story County District Court, who also affirmed and importantly. Uh I believe Mr. Henley said that this is the district's position that there's no constitutional right. Um to record in a public school district setting, but that was actually the holding of the Story County District Court. Um it's on page fifty two of your packet on December. Twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, the Story County District Court held in its decision that the Henleys failed to establish a First Amendment right to video record in a public school setting. Simply does not exist. Uh and so I think that needs to uh sort of underlie all of the decision making that happens here today. Since that uh. That case is now on appeal to the Iowa Supreme Court, we don't have a briefing schedule, we don't have any timelines established, but it is um currently pending. Uh on appeal, however, it remains the the law of the case currently, and I believe the board must uh base its decision on um the. That the the Story County District Court's order uh in that case. The pol- the reason we're here today is because the policy was since amended and updated, and you'll see that uh as Mr. May said. In the ALJ's finding of facts, it was uh greatly expanded. To include more of those guidelines that we had discussed last time for how administrators should be making the decision about who records. Um who doesn't, where that recording happens, what sort of interests are at stake. Uh and that policy was designed uh and drafted. Um after the Iowa Association of School Boards updated their recording policy, and this is not exactly the same, but this policy that the Gilbert Board adopted. Was based off the Iowa Association of School Boards uh model policy concerning recording. Uh Mr. Henley again has appealed, uh obviously, and that's why we're here now. We believe the only decision before this board is to determine whether or not the Gilbert's uh Board of Directors' decision to adopt. This updated policy was reasonable or whether it was an abuse of discretion. And given that a district court judge in Iowa has said that there is no First Amendment right to record in a public school setting. We believe that ends the inquiry uh and that the board has no option other than to affirm the ALJ's decision and dismiss the appeal. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions?
So you're suggesting that the contradiction Mr. Henley pointed out. Isn't there, there is no contradiction. She does seem to make a good point, I'm just a layman here, so I'm just asking.
Can you specify which contradiction you're referring to?
It is okay to record it in one instance and put it online, it's not allowed to be recorded in another. Uh circumstance.
Oh, sure, absolutely, I, yeah, I can speak to that, so. It, yeah, I understand um. One of the things that's important um to note is that the policy is separated out by a school district staff, students. And then visitors, and we don't disagree that there are different considerations for each of those categories of of people. Um. And to um. The point of, you know, can the school district sort of record whenever they want to, however they want to, that's simply not true, parents do have the right to opt out of their child being posted on the internet, that's simply a um. It is not in this policy, I agree with that, it's not there, but that right is available through registration for a child. Um for their information to be removed from uh from public dissemination, whether that's Facebook or or other various website postings. And so we don't believe it's it's inconsistent for the school district to say we may use. Um photos for an educational purpose, we may use them in our lessons, while at the same time saying that we um aren't going to allow students or visitors. Uh and this would apply to staff as well to take recordings in a way that's harassing or that violates the law or that violates the privacy. Uh of students or staff or visitors, I think if you look in that last paragraph of the policy. Um starts on page one, so it should be page two of your packet. I think that last paragraph really addresses your question, uh it says regulations applicable to all recordings. Uh no recording will be allowed where individuals maintain a reasonable expectation of privacy such as the nurse. Restrooms, locker rooms, whatever it is, so so no, we don't think it's inconsistent for the school to say we may use. Uh videos in science class of students doing experiments or or whatever it is, or have media students produce videos, but at the same time not allow um. Recording in ways that violate the law or that harass individuals.
So. I mean, I understand that in a general way. Kind of ubiquitous, the school system, we take pictures of kids in athletics, we take pictures of us doing things all the time. And we want to show what our school district is doing, the great things we're doing, so, you know, we don't ask kids for permission. To put those right in in a on a poster or whatever that we might use for the school, but it fits his personal nature.
Time is up, no, sorry. I'm done. Okay, alright, our next.
Um Assistant Attorney General Tyler Eason, if he has any comments he wishes to make.
Good morning, members of the board, um. I am here on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General as I am. Uh prosecuting the case as it moves through, prosecuting a previous case as it moves through the appellate. Um process. The reason that I have asked to speak to you today is to address the board on. Um what I believe could assist you in making a decision on the current appeal. Uh it's 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 the Attorney General's position that this case. Should be covered under what's called issue, issue preclusion. The general gist of issue preclusion is basically that once a uh once all parties have had a right to fully litigate a a matter before an adjudicated board. Um and the parties are the same. And the issue is. Generally the same. Then. The party should not be allowed allowed to relitigate said issue again and again and again. So basically, the the four elements are. The former judgment is valid and final. Uh the same issue is being brought. The issue is essential to the judgment and the issue was actually litigated. Um. There, there could be an argument, well, this is a different policy and and that's why I'm not arguing what's called claim preclusion, which is where. A party has brought the same claim in a different venue to attack uh again and again and again. The the state would admit that this is a different policy that has been amended by the district. But the issue underlying is the same, the issue underlying is the same issue that was determined by the administrative law judge in this matter. The issue that was heard on appeal by this board. And the issue that was affirmed by the Story County District Court and is currently on uh appellate review. And so it is the position of the Attorney General that. This issue has already been adjudicated by this board and affirmed by this board and. Uh should be affirmed again uh on this appeal. Either on the merits of the well reasoned administrative law judge opinion or on the basis of issue preclusion.
Question?
Barring any questions?
There are no questions being raised. Uh we can discuss this in public or we can go into closed session, whatever the board would like to do.
Can I? I'm not sure that the agenda listed a possible closed session is a possible item today, so I would object to the board going to closed session unless you can show me an agenda that shows that that was put on the agenda.
I'll refer to our attorney.
The board never needs to, the board. Closed session is a discretion. Discretionary bu- function of any board. There is no requirement that an agenda may list that it could go into closed session, one of the exceptions that allows a board to go into closed session is to consider a contested case. According to the provisions of chapter seventeen A. So that is a um, this is a contested case under chapter seventeen A. So that is um, that would provide the authority, the agenda itself spoke of an appeal decision. Uh that being said, it is discretionary within the board uh about whether or not to go to a closed session.
So it's. If the board wants to go on a closed session, it has the legal authority to do so.
Yes, and then if it if it chooses to go down that path, I've got the statute pulled up and we'll. We'll walk through it step by step.
I would prefer that we not, we not, if it didn't go into executive session before, I believe. We can deal with this in a public session.
Okay.
I agree.
Alright.
I'm just one person.
Mike agrees though?
Yes, I agree with you, Brian.
It requires an affirmative motion.
Right, right.
So very nice.
Alright. I would offer, still be open to anybody. Any board member like to offer comments?
One other question to me is, is uh if we record. Something with a camera. Uh video camera or just a a regular camera. Uh if it's in personal nature. Why would we, why would we put that on YouTube or why wouldn't we put that on any medium that people can? Can view without permission, I guess I'm just asking that question, Mike. Well, basier or what, but why wouldn't we ever? Put that. And make that available to the public. Without a parent or our students' permission.
It would be in every school year, every parent has a. The right to. Refuse their.
Yeah.
Children's image.
When you register every year, I do it every year, my kid. Ask every year.
Okay, so you could just a just a blanket, no, you don't ever, right, and that would include a basketball picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I I say I don't want that in there, and if I see, I have a right, right, I have a legal right to do something about that, right, because I said I don't want, I didn't authorize that.
Sure. Thank you.
Absolutely.
That helps, yeah.
Other comments?
Well, my view is that we're dealing with this new policy on its face, on its face. It it appears reasonable to me. Um. Not my job to second guess the. Gilbert Community School District's policies. Unless it's unreasonable or somehow arbitrary or capricious, which I don't believe it is. My view is that it's content neutral and I would support the. Proposed decision. Presented to us.
I would agree, I agree.
The proposed decision is to dismiss the appeal.
Yes.
Yes, and your, look to your comment, it helps me with that, absolutely.
I remember, I mean, it's exactly what you said, I only have to view this in light of it, you know, on its face and whether they, the court abused their discretion, right, I mean, so that's whether or not. That, your question, I I I understand that and having was able to help with that, but. Did they, is, does this policy abuse, you know, did they abuse their discretion, discretion adopting this policy, I guess is what we need to consider today. Or is this policy arbitrary, capricious, sorry, yeah, reasonable?
For the reasons I stated, and. In concurrence with the proposed decision, I move that we adopt the proposed decision.
Second.
Is adopting a proposed decision good enough as far as we need any other language as that?
Um. By statute, you can uh adopt. Reverse or modify. So uh that motion, the motion is legally sufficient.
Okay, so we're adopting the decision of.
I was just giving my rationale.
And that's been moved by Brian and second by Brooke, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Brooke.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Cass?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I am a aye. Motion's carried. We move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, thanks for coming in.
Association of Classical Christian Schools Accreditation Accrediting Agency Application.
Morning, board members, Director Snow. My name's Tina Wayler, I'm the Bureau Chief of School Improvement, and I have with me Eric Heitz, Administrative Consultant, and Dennis McLean, a School Improvement Consultant. And we served as the scoring team for the application that are presenting today. On Zoom, we have Tom Spencer, and he's representing the Association of Classical Christian Schools. He's available for questions if needed. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric, who's going to talk about the process that we used to evaluate the application and our recommendations.
Good morning. Iowa Code Section two fifty six eleven subsection sixteen grants authority to the State Board to maintain a list of approved independent accrediting agencies. A non-public school may be accredited by an independent accrediting agency that appears on the list maintained by the State Board of Education. Currently, eight agencies are listed in the executive summary. The application review process included three readers. Each read all of the applications and utilized the scoring matrix aligned to the application. After individual readers reviewed and scored each application independently, readers discussed the application and came to an average on the application score. The scoring matrix below indicates the scores assigned to the Association Classical Christian Schools. And so I'll just go through the, the actual rationale and summarize those for you. Section only organizational information. The agency was recognized, one of the, excuse me, the application provided a thorough handbook detailed services and accreditation process. The agency was recognized for success criteria of graduates specifically noted in the application, the Good Soil Report conducted by the University of Notre Dame. We scored the application for this section twenty-eight out of thirty-two. For section B accreditation standards, the application provided detailed requirement for fiscal management, rigorous academic standards, and assessment practices. The agency provided a description for corrective actions when standards are not met. The academic standards were clearly outlined in the handbook, and we scored them forty-four out of fifty on this section. Section C of the application talks about the accreditation process. The application clearly laid out how a school navigates through the application process. We gave them ten out of ten for this section. Section D is the organizational structure and citations. The application provided evidence of detailed fiscal data and contract management practices and procedures. We gave them a seven out of eight on this section. And then section E, additional information. There was no points for this section, but we did note that the agency currently accredits sixty-four schools in twenty-seven states, and the applicant provided a thorough fiscal audit report. As far as the final score and final rationale, we are, we recommended because they have a total score of eighty-nine out of one hundred. Turn it back to Tina.
Okay, so as Eric said, with the score of eighty-nine on the required components, it's recommended that the State Board approve the Association of Classical Christian Schools to accredit Iowa non-public schools as stated in the Iowa Code Section two fifty-six point eleven subsection sixteen.
With the recent legislation, assuming now state money can flow through the schools that are credited by this agency. As, as part of the accreditation process, does the, does the accrediting agency or make sure that the school is in compliance with all prevailing state standards, laws, and regulations such as teacher licensure, background checks, required force work, et cetera? Is that all part of this?
Yes.
And, and do they ensure that, or does the state ensure that, or how does that, how does that work?
So when the independent agency is approved, they actually are the ones that will accredit the schools. So we meet with them regularly to make sure that they're understanding that that is their responsibility to do that. But it, it is their responsibility then, because we can have state accredited, non-public schools, or independently accredited. And so there's different processes for both.
Mr. Spencer, can you talk to us a little bit about those processes and make sure that when you accredit a school in Iowa, that they're following all the state guidelines or in compliance with that?
I, I would address three things, thank you. First of all, when a school applies to be a candidate for accreditation with our association, we ask that the school board attest that the school is in compliance with state law. That is simply to become a candidate for accreditation. We also have a standard in our handbook that also addresses state law. We ask the schools to communicate with the visit committee in their self-study what the state laws are that private schools need to comply with, and to show through documentation that they do comply with those laws. I have experience serving on the Virginia Council of Private Education. Virginia Commonwealth has a law requiring fingerprint background checks for all employees. I'm just completing a site visit at a school for accreditation. And one of the things that we did on this visit was to examine the personnel records at the school to let, to ask, to have them demonstrate for us that they have complied with the law in Virginia for fingerprint background checks and child, or childhood abuse registry searches. So it, it comes in in the application for candidacy, it comes in in the self-study documentation, and it comes in on a site visit.
How, when, when you're working with a school, what is the, what's your schedule as far as accrediting and then re-accrediting a school? Are you on a three-year cycle, a five-year cycle, or are you on that?
For a school to receive initial accreditation, the longest period that they can be accredited for the first time is two years. After that, they can receive a maximum of five years on the first renewal accreditation. Sometimes it's two if there are discrepancies in the report, and that will convert to five once the discrepancies are corrected. But the typical pattern is initial, two-year renewal, five-year renewal.
Other questions besides mine?
Good question, thank you.
Maybe a question for the, the, I think I brought this up last time. Has there been a schedule developed to review the agencies that are providing the accreditation? Well, that, the first ones were approved about eight years ago. Is there a time where you go back and take a look at the approval process and make sure that we're doing what they said they're going to be doing, whatever that return is? I don't, eight years seems like it's a long time, but.
It is, and that is something that has not been done in the past. And so as a team, we're talking about what that looks like. Our first step in that was actually running together so far the eight that we have in place, meeting with them, just helping them understand what their responsibility is, because we weren't sure that everyone was on the same page. So we're meeting with them quarterly right now, and we are working on what is the process? What does it look like when they are approved? And working through just some of the code about what timelines we could put in place to review. So that is definitely on our work list, and we are just trying to pull them together because in the past, as far as we understand, that had not been done, never accredited, and then forevermore, they stayed accredited. So that was also a concern for us about how that process needed to look.
Would you, would you have more details? Just report back to a city room? I know it takes some time to get those things all in place. I'm not asking like next month, just whenever it's ready.
All these schools, excuse me, yes, go ahead. Do all these schools have brick and mortar? We're talking about traditional schools with, with buildings.
Yes.
And not online.
Right, they were wired to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Entertaining motion there?
I move to accept the recommendation to approve.
Been moved by Cindy to approve the Association of Classical Christian Schools application. Is there a second?
Second.
Checking by Mike, any further discussion? Very none, I'll call for a vote, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Oh, she was carried. All right, Cindy, yes, congratulations. Seventh day Adventist Schools credit application.
Okay, again, Eric, Dennis, and I also scored this application that we're bringing before you. Prior to getting into this, I did want to preface this with, we have the first round of applications of which you approved in December, and they did apply at that point. At that point, we had to disqualify their application because they were not able to provide documentation of non-profit status. We did go ahead and score the entire thing, just so that we could talk with them afterwards. So on January second, we did meet with the organization and discussed why they were disqualified and just concerns we had about the application. We had a lot of difficulty finding the information that we needed in order to score it. So after we met with them, we had one more window for them to have an application turned in by February second, and they did submit a second application of which we're bringing forward now. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context about that. They did not have a representative that was able to join today, so we don't have, they're not represented here today. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to talk through some of the details, and then we'll get our recommendation.
And submit for Iowa Code Section two fifty-six eleven subsection sixteen grants authority to the State Board to maintain a list of approved independent accrediting agencies. A non-public school may be accredited by an independent accrediting, accrediting agency that appears on a list maintained by the State Board of Education. Currently, the eight agencies are listed in the executive summary. The application review process included three readers. Each read all applications and utilized the scoring matrix aligned to the application. After individual readers reviewed and scored each application independently, readers discussed the application and came to an agreement on the application score. The scoring matrix below indicates the scores assigned to the Adventist Accrediting Agency North American Division Commission. Now, go ahead and go through those. So section A, organization information. The application provided information on the organization. It was missing details on how standards are reviewed and revised based on the information provided. And so they were scored twenty-four out of thirty-two on this section. Section G talks about accreditation standards, content areas that will be listed, however, no specific standards could be found. Therefore, the rigor of the standards, excuse me, was not able to be determined. Assessments, practices were listed, but not specific assessments. So validity, validity and reliability could not be determined. Basic fiscal processes are described, but rigor was not able to be determined based on the information provided. They received a score of twenty out of fifty on this section. Section C, the accreditation process, the process for accreditation was described, and the application and resources were provided by the applicant. We did provide them with six out of ten on the score. And the section, section D, organization structure and citations. The application provided evidence of fiscal data and contract management practices and procedures. They received a six out of eight. Section E, additional information, again, this section does not have any points. However, we did want to note the application indicated six hundred and sixty-six schools within the United States and nine hundred and eight schools in early childhood programs in the United States, Canada, Palm, and Micronesia. A final score or final applicant score is, was fifty-six out of one hundred, and he said, which we're like, we're opposed to not recommend. Turn it back to Tina.
Well, as Eric said, the score did not indicate that we were comfortable with recommending this organization. So it's recommended that the State Board deny approval of the Adventist Accrediting Association North American Division Commission and Accreditation to accredit Iowa non-public schools as stated in Iowa Code Section two fifty-six point eleven subsection sixteen. And again, we'd just like to point out, our main concern was the lack of evidence that the accrediting agency sets high standards and non-academic standards for all students, including preparation of students for post-secondary success. So the fact that we weren't able to verify the academic standards was just like, we just couldn't move it forward.
So the, the final score in your matrix says recommended subject to conditions. But that would be for a score of sixty to seventy-four, but the, the actual executive summary says not recommend. I'm taking that the subject to conditions has struck, that that's not it.
Well, they have fifty-six, which is, but not recommended.
Okay.
So.
I'm just, right there, talk about subject to conditions, maybe that's just the type of. That would be, yeah. Okay. No, no, you know, I just wanted to be clear, I mean, my initial thought was they should be ought to withdraw it. But then when I read your, I mean, a place that's granting accreditation based on standards and they don't have standards, that's, I mean, I could agree.
And we, we did try, Eric.
Work on that on the way down.
You're four hours, I roll.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I, so they're, they resubmitted?
Yeah, and we, we did debate, and maybe that's where that was, about whether we should reach out, ask them. They provided, what they provided to us was content names. We teach literacy, we teach math, we teach science. But all others that we brought before the board had detailed standards that they were teaching. So they're teaching literacy, but here's all the standards that they would cover under that and expect their schools to do. So we just decided, since it had been the second time that they had applied, it wasn't the burden of us to reach out and say, okay, please provide them.
Do you think it's lack of properly completing the application? Or is it these things that you want to see do not exist?
We're not sure they don't exist, but in being quite upfront, it was very difficult for us to find the information on the others that would be a question. And then we would have a complete answer, maybe links to find something. But in this case, we would have a link, and it was more of a search and find. On this application, what do we say? And it was more of a search and find on this application, what do we say, probably took us about four times as long. During each time to try and um. Get the correct answer, so it was it was more challenging for us.
You have a conversation with them afterwards after you scored it, if you. Here's what, here's what we got, folks, and here's what we don't have, and if you want to do this, you need these things.
We had that.
And that's why you got the second.
Correct.
Is it a disadvantage? I I know the answer. Is it a disadvantage for them the next go around to have had this one denied?
Not as long as they provide the information.
Yeah, I I guess we would just expect to be able to find the information clearly and. Answer the questions that we ask and provide evidence that they clearly have standards. Um, they they had a good process for accreditation, but without the standards included in the process for. Accreditation was just a non-starter for us.
One of the duties of somebody submitting an application is to make it easy for people to find information. And having reviewed numerous applications. It's a big struggle to find links and go to links and there's nothing there and it's a continuous hunting search. You're really doing all the work for them, you can find out what's.
I I would move that we deny approval. To Adventist Accrediting Association and accept the recommendation. It's been moved to deny approval.
A second.
Second by Cindy, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Approval is denied. Alright. Drake University, approval to offer and teach.
Hi, Eric, members of the board, thank you for your uh time. Um, today I'm bringing three programs, starting with Drake University. Uh, request to add um a teacher intern preparation program. This is an alternative route for teacher preparation. Drake already has an appropriate teacher prep uh program and a principal and superintendent prep program. And by adding this um additional pathway, they would provide uh an opportunity for individuals who have a bachelor's degree. In a different uh content area to receive the um instruction needed. Uh, to learn about the pedagogy and methodologies, they need to uh learn to be a teacher in a K twelve setting. And this program leads to a licensure. Um, we have uh Dr. Wise and Dr. Glesby from Drake. Here with us on Zoom. Um, so I would be going over um. Some of the standards, but just to give you a little more um overview of um how this may align with the goals and outcomes. And priorities of the board. Um, this program specifically um is aligned with the goal number two. Promoting equity education by closing achievement gap. Uh, the number D that teachers are prepared to teach in a classroom where all students are supported and high quality universal. Instruction and support. These are some of the um. Standards that we are looking for when we are reviewing chapter seventy seven. Um, it also aligns with state board goal three, ensuring high quality teachers. And other educators in every classroom and high quality leaders in every school. This also aligns with number C in um goal three, that is recruitment and retention efforts, increasing the number of. Effective teachers in Iowa. This pathway is very helpful for those who have a bachelor's degree and are seeking to become teachers. It also aligns with goal four. B, um, the secondary and post-secondary educational student, supporting student through. Um, industry-aligned careers and also multiple pathway for secondary success. With that, um. We reviewed this program based on chapter seventy seven, which is um. Align with the the standards of teacher preparation programs. It's very similar to chapter seventy nine with some slight differences because it is designed for individuals with a bachelor's degree. Um, some of the standards we have looked at and 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 this pathway uh prepares teachers in K twelve. Some K twelve standards and some five twelve standards. So it's not for elementary teaching. Um, we looked at the governance and resources, Drake University and the education preparation program has a transparent organizational. Structure. They, um, this program will be part of that education unit and they have the resources. Required and needed for a program to be sustainable. Uh, they have improved the contract that is required specific to this program. Uh, there are, in this program, there needs to be a higher involvement of K twelve districts. Because the candidates in the program take a minimum of twenty seven credits and twenty eight credits. And then do a one year of internship as a full-time teacher in the school and they are required to have. Uh, support and mentorship by the school and therefore Drake University has developed a contract, a template contract. That would address the district responsibilities towards these candidates to ensure that they're successful in the first year. Where they are serving as an intern. Um, so that would be a little bit different from a regular contract that they would do for a student teacher. We also looked at faculty standard, we compared the qualification of faculty in their curriculum. And the assigned teaching responsibilities to ensure that they are teaching in areas that is aligned with their preparation. And experience. The faculty have engagement in K twelve setting. Uh, this was also checked through the review process because. Many of the faculty members also teach in teacher preparation and they have shown evidence of. Uh, minimum of forty hours of engagement in K twelve setting throughout five years. Um, they also offer continuous professional development to faculty members, including in their content area. Where they are preparing the candidates. Uh, we also looked at program of study uh standard. Um, this is where chapter seventy seven is slightly different. From chapter seventy nine, we normally will talk about clinical practice and knowledge, skills and disposition standards. Those two are combined into the program of studies in chapter seventy seven, so it includes the standards that the candidates are kept. Um, that the program aligns with to ensure that the candidates are prepared for. Um, the alignments are made with both in task standards and Iowa teaching standard. In task standards are Interstate Teacher Assessment and Support Consortium standards, recognized nationally. And we also have Iowa teaching standards that are used for evaluation of the teachers in the K twelve. Um, the courses have clear alignment and they have shown us um a chart where they have made those alignments. And uh the evidence that those uh standards are, the candidates are being assessed, uh meeting those standards. Throughout the different courses. This, the curriculum was submitted to the Board of Educational Examiners and through the review of their curriculum, one concern that was raised by. The consultant who reviewed the curriculum was uh that Drake has a higher number of credits that is. Compared to what is required in the program. Um, so the requirement for this program is twenty eight credits. But Drake has thirty seven credit requirements for the candidates to complete this program. Uh, when discussed with Drake University, um. They uh they shared that there are several reasons, so this program also lead to a master's degree. And because of that, they wanted to make sure that it is equitable to what a master's degree will lead to. Additionally, um, they wanted to make sure that the candidates are qualified to receive uh some of the about seven credit course. The credit of the courses are related to the practicum and the year that they do their internship. And therefore that would qualify the candidates to receive financial aid, um, if they need that during the year that they are. Uh, doing their internship. We also looked at the assessment standard. Um, the candidate assessment, um, there is a process and plan in place. That Drake will be doing a candidate assessment for the different competencies and. Um, they will be communicating that with the stakeholders and the faculty members to use also that data. Um, to improve the program. Uh, we also have reviewed Drake a program. Uh, for their full program approval just recently and they are building a. Uh, much more um involved assessment system and they have committed to ensuring that this program. Assessment is also aligned with their overall um regular program assessment for their teaching preparation. So they also evaluate their own program uh for improvements. Um, with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions and Dr. Wise and Dr. Glesby are here to answer if you have any questions about it. But I would like to recommend um Drake Teacher Per- Teacher Intern Preparation Program for approval. Through twenty twenty uh twenty thirty to twenty thirty one academic year.
Any comments from Drake University?
No, I think uh Miriam captured it well. We're excited about this opportunity. Uh, one of the challenges we faced in recent years was. With our M A T and M S T programs for career changers going into education, uh those numbers have seen uh a decline. And so we think by creating this high-quality rigorous teacher intern program, uh we can draw more. Uh, high-quality candidates into uh the teaching field.
These folks are not compensated in any any way. I mean, there's still the tuition to be paid and and the work to be done. Uh, the hours to be taken and and supervised by by an in-class teacher as well as someone from Drake.
Right, in their first year, um, in their intern year, though, they are compensated, they have the teacher intern license. And so that's the attractive uh piece of this program is that, you know, being able to, instead of doing. Two years of coursework and student teaching, uh as a a professional already out with a bachelor's degree. They're able to complete that coursework in a year and then earn compensation.
And that equals a full-time teacher compensation.
Yes.
When would you launch the program?
We would lot, we would begin recruiting right now and launch uh this summer and and fall.
And what is, what is capacity? How many, how many students do you think you would would have in your class and how many can you? How many can you hold?
It's a, it's a little bit of an unknown. I mean, I think we could take on, you know, as many as as twenty twenty five. Uh, in a single cohort at a time. Um, but you know, part of that will come through the recruitment and working with our. Uh, partner districts in the Des Moines metro area.
So again, you're you're around, you're thinking primarily in this area, as as far as locating interns and and you have that capacity.
Yes, we we absolutely have that capacity, Mike, and we do think it'll be primarily in the Des Moines metro area. Uh, we'll probably work, you know, first and most closely with Des Moines Public Schools, just given the depth and the strength of our partnership. And the need that they have for high-quality teachers every single year, um but we do have the capacity to extend beyond that as as well. And this just dovetails so nicely with our existing M A T, M S T programs, uh our undergraduate teacher preparation. That it it just adds to our portfolio uh of of programs.
Any way you can, uh, any way that you can increase the number of folks coming into education, we're for it. And I know you'll do a great job with it.
Thanks, Mike. We re- we really appreciate that. We're excited. I mean, I think as Miriam said, you know, this really builds on a a solid foundation. Which was improved this past year with the the accreditation process and we'll be back in front of you again in a in a few months. And so we think the timing is just about perfect uh for us to be able to to launch this this new program.
I'd move that we uh grant full approval of the Drake Teacher Intern Preparation Program.
Been moved by Mike and seconded by Brian, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone, and and a big thank you to Miriam and and the team for for their help with this process.
Good to see you, Ryan.
You too, thank you.
Okay, Southwestern Community College.
Next, we have Southwestern Community College in point of view, um. For approving, this is a new program, Paraeducator Preparation Program. It's a. A pre-kind kindergarten to grade twelve, uh Paraeducator Generally Setification Program. We have program representative John Franklin and so we're not just not on Zoom with us. And just to go over over the, how this also relates to the state goals and. Um, any state board goals and initiatives, um, it aligns directly with goal two D. Uh, which is teachers are prepared to teach in the classroom. There are all teachers are, uh, where all students are supported with high-quality university instruction and supports. I know that this is a Paraeducator Preparation Program, but a Paraeducator role is essential to a teacher who's working with. Individuals who have, who need that initial additional support of the Paraeducator and that would help teachers achieve that goal. Um, it also helps with recruitment and retention efforts to increase, increase the number of effective teachers in Iowa. And the reason for that is um kind of mentioned in the overview of the program, uh, the community college. Is going to offer these uh programming uh face-to-face, also as a concurrent enrollment. Opportunity to the uh high school students. Normally we see um. Excitement when individuals go into this pathway to further their education to become teachers. So we are hoping that this would be a great um beginning thinking opportunity for the individuals in high school. To think about becoming a Paraeducators and hopefully further their education to become teachers. It also, again, this would also, I believe, that support them, providing multiple pathways for individuals to go into the. Higher education and supporting the um industry-aligned career pathway, uh which is the goal for of the state board. I reviewed um the program, um and also somebody from Board of Bureau of Educational Examiner. Reviewed the um, the program for their curriculum. Um, and I'm going to give you just an overview of the findings um and the recommendations we provided, given this was a newly developed. Program. But the first standard we looked at was organizational risk and resources. Community colleges, including this one, has great resources, but this one specifically, they had mentioned. Um, some of the resources they had and provided evidence of library resources, tutoring services, accommodations provided to the candidates. Campus health and mental health health support provided to the candidates, including also um classroom supplies. Of technology that aligns with what the candidates will be experiencing in K twelve, so that would help them. Prepare to work with that technology and the classroom setting. Uh, they had a detailed plan on monitoring and um assisting the candidates to fulfill the program requirements. Including the clinical requirements. They also uh provided evidence that. They also uh provided evidence that they have um available faculty development opportunities for the faculty members to be able to receive um to further their um professional development. The next standard was diversity standard. Um, what we look at in this standard are the policies and procedures that promote and support diversity and inclusion, evidence of job postings and um other policies related to equal employment and equal opportunities, non-discrimination, um, statements for um hiring faculty members, but also recruiting students into the program. Uh, they also provided evidence that uh recruiting and retention of diverse individuals is part of the core values of the Southwestern Community College. Uh, faculty standard, uh, when we look at this standard, we look at faculty uh faculty uh C V's and uh the related assigned coursework. Uh, we have reviewed those and all the faculty show alignment of duties with their preparation and knowledge skills. Um, and um we provided a recommendation on this one because this is a new program. There was no um requirement in place for faculty members to have K-12 engagement. So we have provided the recommendation for the program to ensure that they put that requirement in place and track that engagement in K-12 setting where the Paraeducators are involved, so that the faculty members are um aware of what are the needs of the K-12 setting as they are teaching these candidates. Um, the next standard is assessment and evaluation. Uh, they have um very detailed rubric. I was very impressed when I was reviewing the curriculum and the rubrics for this program. They have already developed all of that. The syllabi are very detailed, alignment of standards and assignments and assessments are very clear. Um, and they also have um assessment for the program, which is included for all of their preparation programs. Um, that is a campus-wide assessment. We did provide some recommendations to include. When reviewing the syllabi, uh, we recommended that they would ensure that professional code of conduct and ethics uh explicitly are addressed throughout the assignment and candidates are being assessed on that um standard. It's chapter twenty-five of the Board of Educational Examiners. They, we also suggested that they ensure that they collect candidate performance data in the clinical and throughout the program to specifically look into how they can improve this program. And that includes survey of the graduates, once they have the first cohort graduating this program, survey those individuals and their supervisors to utilize that data for program improvements. And the last standard is clinical practice. Uh, the, they have um evidence that they have process for placement of um state approved, placement of candidate in state-approved schools under supervision of licensed teachers. Um, we recommend that that um they ensure that Paraeducator placements are being tracked and they keep that on the record of each candidate members. Um, with that, uh, the program representatives are here to answer any questions. Um, and I would like to recommend the program for full approval until twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one academic year.
Good morning, Southwestern. Selena and John, do you have any comments for us this month?
Morning.
Good morning. Uh, I don't think so. We're excited to get underway with this. We've been working on it a while. Um, and we have looked at those recommendations already and plan to implement those as we move forward. And, uh, you know, we're already doing the uh teacher preparation uh with the transfer major to the Regents. Um, and Selena's talked to students about the possibility of this uh going into place next year, and we already have some interest in that. And so, uh, we're looking forward to get going.
Yeah, my question was, how are you going to recruit? And what do you think you'll have in terms of the number and interest?
Um, right now, most of the education classes run about eight students. Uh, so we have started pushing it out to the high schools. And some of the high schools we work with uh have uh the Intro to Ed class. Uh, right now, we're the only ones running the observation class. The students would have to work directly with Selena uh to do that part. Um, but I don't, do you know how many are in the high schools besides what come here?
As far as, um, it varies from district to district. Uh, currently, we have five different districts that are implementing um a couple of these different classes. So we are seeing an expansion. So this program um really has, the education program has really taken place over the last few years. I just was implemented. And so what we're, our big thing is now trying to recruit and grow. For an example, I've already met with a guidance counselor this week, talked about some of the new options that are available, and then the possibility of the Paraeducator, which I would told her I would get back to her once we um were approved for this. But just, um, she was very excited about the new opportunities.
The primary focus is high school students. Is that fair to say that's 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 who you're focusing on?
Or or any of our community college students that are interested in the education pathway.
So is there compensation for these people?
No.
No.
There'd be no compensation? And how about credit for high school students then?
Yes, they are getting the college credit. So they'd get the seven hours uh for the three classes. And then it will be free for the high school students to enter the concurrent enrollment program.
John, I have a question, and it's it's sort of, but not related to Southwestern's application here. Um, and I'm I'm supportive of the application. So, um, the, how does the changes proposed to the A E A's impact Paraeducator uh offerings? Um, because Paraeducator credentialing is, was a primary service of the A E A's. So, um, is that proposed to continue under the A E A's?
I'm I'm not sure what will happen with the A E A's uh and how they do that. But I mean, right now, the A E A path to becoming a Para is easier. I mean, it's a weekend and it's cheaper than what our program will be. So ours really is kind of geared to people who are already our students and not just trying to become a Paraeducator program. So if the A E A's are not offering that service, it's going to make that path more difficult for anybody who wants to become a Para.
And so I should have clarified, Ja- John, that was a John Robbins question. Um. So, I guess my thought to the Board of Education is, you know, if this is a service that changes for the A E A's, this is going to become an even more important for our community colleges as they offer these programs because it, the Paraeducator Program pathway um will only be available now through community colleges. So as we consider this um program through Southwestern, I think I think that's really important. So I don't know if we have an answer on where that will end with A D A's.
And we've kind of talked a little bit about that. And so one of the things we're really trying to do is figuring out how to help build that gap. If that were to happen, what would be some alternative ways we could help working people? Would that be something where I would offer online courses where they could still get this through and get the certificate without having some of those barriers in place?
So basically, we don't know what's going to happen with the A A legislation. And one of the reasons for a difference in cost is that uh the community colleges says Southwestern are giving college credit for their coursework, whereas the A A's are not. There's a difference. When you're signing up for credit, there's more work involved.
Is there a difference in the certification or whatever that they get? If they go the community college route or the A D A route?
It's not.
That'd be on the local district to decide if they're gonna.
Like, is there a pay difference? Or is there like, uh, you've got college credit, therefore, we pay you this much more? I know, like, in education, sometimes if you advance to a different level or whatever.
That'd be a local school district decision. But what the community colleges offers is the credit, which means more work. The student is in high school, you know, there's the, it's basically three to the student. Now, if they're not in high school, that's a different, different topic, yeah.
And not everyone's going to be in high school. So they have to go to community college now and pay for that. That's going to be a barrier.
And Miriam, do you have um the data in point of view on the total numbers of Paraeducators who are certified versus not?
Don't have it right here, so I can, I'm going to have to get that ready and send it to you after the board meeting, if you would like to share that. But it's about like twenty percent who are certified, uh, based on the conversation we have had with Mike Cabin before, when we wanted to look at C P R A program. Uh, when he reviewed number of Paraeducators involved, twenty percent were the ones who had certification because we're in, Iowa is not requiring Paraeducators to be certified. But that certification, in some areas, they will have to have certification and associate degree to be highly qualified based on the funding that they are being um serving to. Uh, but generally, for uh every Paraeducator, it's not a requirement. And that has improved through the T P R A program. It has provided those opportunities to the different individuals based on what they need. Um, I would also add, we actually have another A E A program that I will be bringing to you. The individuals that these programs serve are very different. A E A's are normally serving individuals who are also currently serving in the district. Uh, by taking these courses, um, like the um different um con- uh concentration areas, they're able to renew their certification. That's a requirement every five years. So that's a good path for somebody who has their Paraeducator certification, who want to keep that um recent. So they will take that, they add some additional um competencies. So, for example, they will be adding E S L, Special Ed competencies through adding that class, but they will be renewing that certification that they have received. So that also would be a good route for somebody who is not planning to gain a um associate degree or bachelor's degree in the future.
Yeah. And then just one final point of clarification, and Thomas, please jump in. Um, but uh obviously legislative conversations are ongoing, but I do not believe anything um i- in the current legislative conversation would prohibit or or hamper Paraeducator offerings by A D A's. Just to clarify your initial point, Cassandra.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a recommendation that's been made about for Southwestern. We have a motion.
I move that we approve the uh Southwestern's new Paraeducator Preparation Generalist Program. Second.
By Cindy and second by Brooke. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the recommendation or? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Prairie Lake A A, Paraeducator Preparation, substantial change.
Yes, so Prairie Lake has an already-approved Paraeducator Generalist Certification. They're applying to, uh, they also have um early childhood and special ed um uh concentration area. By that concentration area, they are adding this uh forty-five uh um hour um additional professional development, which is equal to one credit, one course normally, um, that the individuals are taking in the different content area to become more expert in the area that they're serving. Um, this application aligns with the state board goals on number three. Um, ensuring high-quality teachers and other educators in every classroom and high-quality leaders are in every school. Um, number option B, which is teacher and other educators and leader program, uh, leader programs, prepared, prepared teachers, um, other educators and leaders to utilize evidence-based practice and meet work-class standards. Um, this, this type of program, the concentration area, add those other skills that a Paraeducators need to work with uh students who need special ed support, um, students who have behavioral, students who um is in early childhood supporting those students. Or in this case, um, this is working with English language learners. Um, so I'm going to go over what we have done to review this program. We also have uh Linda Anthony and her colleagues here in the room. Uh, so they will be able to answer if you have questions about this review. Um, and I will be happy to answer any questions after uh presenting the program to you. Uh, just overall, um Prairie Lake A A, over the past five years, have prepared one hundred fifty-five Paraeducators who were only uh completed the general certification, but several of those also have furthered their um skills by adding those concentration areas in the areas that they already offer in early childhood and special ed. Um, and so this, this additional concentration area will help those who would like to receive that additional support and professional development to work with uh English language learners. Um, we reviewed the organizational, the organization and resources um standard. There was no changes in the structure of the program because they already have a program in place. The governance is going to follow the same process that they have. Um, the concentration credits are beneficial to those who are um receiving this credit for renewal. Um, and Prairie Lake has provided evidence that they have the resources and um individuals who will be teaching this class and the resources available to individuals who will be coming into this program uh to be able to end that uh concentration area. In the diversity um standard, we reviewed their policies related to hiring, appropriation of the candidates, um, and they have commitment to preparation of candidates to work with uh behavioral, cultural, and personal needs of the different learners. Um, and this concentration specifically will help the students to further that to English language learners in the classrooms. The faculty C V's were reviews, reviewed by uh in comparison to the um assigned, the teaching assignments. And they have qualified faculty member who will be teaching the course, and they provided the course alignment uh to us. The faculty are actively engaged in the K-12 environment, and they plan to continue to keep that. Um, they showed that the program assessment is in place for their other uh concentration area and the program. They will add the E S L um competencies assessment to the program. They have already developed those competencies and the rubrics where they would be assessing the candidates for the knowledge skills that they are required to be prepared for. And we have reviewed those. Board of Educational Examiners um consultant also reviewed their curriculum. And um they have approved their curriculum um as it was submitted. And the last standard is the clinical. Um, it was, uh, the, the program had provided evidence that they will plan to have pro- uh provide uh placements that are relevant and aligned with the Paraeducator's preparation. Um. They also will review the qualification of the instructor and making sure that the cooperating teacher is a a licensed teacher in the classroom. The candidates have opportunity to be observed and observe uh teachers and also to be provided some feedback. Uh, they also utilize feedback they receive from their candidates on the quality of their placements and the teachers they work with and the kind of feedback they receive and utilize that feedback they receive from their candidates for improving the program and the experiences. Um, with that, I I would like to recommend approval for Prairie Lake A A to offer a concentration area in uh Paraeducator um E S L uh for the kindergarten to the grade uh twelve. Um, through the next review that is due twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-nine.
Thank you. If I could make a few comments regarding your call.
Thank you.
Questions from our Prairie Lake representatives? Questions from our Prairie Lake representatives? Well, the uh continuing question is, what are you anticipating as far as number of students? Looking to add this concentration?
We acknowledge some of our members for general slide here. It's each participant who received their general certificate. We hope that in that population, um, our people will be interested in adding endorsement to the. We have a endorsement. Jackie is our, um, is our E L consultant, title three consultant. She will also be starting that class. Becky's out in our school.
John, sorry to interrupt, I, I can't hear at all.
Can I have folks come up here in the front closer to these owl pods? Our online.
The question was.
We hope to. Improve student learning, particularly with the E L students. Last year, in our general certification program, we had sixty people become certified. And working in the schools, Jackie probably has a perception of the numbers.
Yeah, I think we anticipate, you know, fifteen to twenty um interested uh teacher assistants um to come and learn more about. You know, how to support E Ls in the general classroom. Um, and we plan to also incentivize using title three funds since this is a supplemental um. And service for um E L students to have a well-trained um parent educator helping them. Um, so we planned to incentivize fifteen um parent educators with title three funds to. Um, just be compensated for their time that it will take to complete these forty hours of service.
How many hours of service have you done?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Wondering what a classroom looks like, tell me what a classroom looks like with this in, this intern is placed into a classroom. What does that classroom look like?
Usually, um, there's a classroom teacher kind of providing tier one instruction.
And would it personally be bilingual then?
Ideally, but it doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be, okay.
So this course will prepare them to differentiate on the fly. Um, utilize translation services if needed for our newcomer students, really trying to make the core accessible. Um, because it can be difficult to be a second language learner and try to get everything from the core. And that's also difficult for a classroom teacher to try to, you know, speak to um. A s- a smaller percentage of, percentage of students that are second language learners. So our parent, parent educators speaking as a E L teacher, E L educator are so crucial to helping our students kind of. Get the core knowledge out of their whole classes.
So would all the students in that class be students who need to be fluent in another language? I mean, you have, we see some mix here as we're talking about some of the things that are happening. Do all these kids, uh, are they proficient just in one language and they're trying to do two or are they already proficient and so on that? I'm, I wonder how the mix looks like in the class.
Well, multilingual learners could be bilingual or they could be proficient in several languages. And we're trying to get them proficient in English.
In English.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I don't think they're talking, they're not talking about it, you know, a whole classroom of students that are speaking. Two languages, this would be a parent who's helping support.
Yeah, right, yeah, you're trying.
I just wanna make sure I was understanding.
And I have an English teacher, I was a ESL teacher before and. Um, even though I had that other language skill, um, if somebody is and is knowledgeable in their English language. And they don't have another language knowledge, um, having some skills to teach English as a second language. Would be enough for a teacher to serve in that role and support the students into uh getting on their feet. On starting to learn English.
Any other questions? Right now, I'll call for a motion.
I'll move.
But what are you moving, Cass?
I am moving the full award approval to Prairie Lakes A E A to offer English as a second language. On their parent educator program through the next review schedule for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine academic year. How's that, John?
Very well done, very well done.
That was more than anticipated.
Well, you asked. And thank you for coming to the table, I'm sorry I'm not there, I, I wanted to hear everything, so I appreciate that, I really do.
So it's moved by Cass and second by, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, oppose same sign. Motion is carried, uh, we have a little brief uh item here before a break for lunch. Uh, if ever you wanna introduce our.
Thank you.
I guess, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have uh Brittany.
Yeah. Yeah, Dr. Garland is in our um education program in Bonavista University. Uh, they helped us arrange the visit yesterday with Storm Lake, she's working closely with Stacy. Um, and uh, working on that T P R A program. She also was part of that task force that um wrote the proposal for the T P R A program. And they were one of the very first individuals who came up with creativity and ways to make that a possibility. And they have hosted us here today, um, we wanted to introduce her to you. And if you have any questions related to that task, feel free to ask, um. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to campus, it's a beautiful sunny day, not quite as warm as we would hope it would be. Hope you're enjoying the facilities, if you need anything, feel free to let me know, Marion can let me know as well. Hopefully everything is suited you well, sorry was not able to be here yesterday, I was actually on an H L C site visit in Ohio. So I didn't get back until late last night, so, but I know my counterpart Monica was able to be there to kind of present what we did. But if you have any additional questions about what we're doing, what we're coming up with. I know we had some questions on our administration program, we are getting that ready, it will start flying here, we call it term six, it'll be in August. Um, but we just haven't gotten H L C approvals, what we're waiting on, which was supposed to happen last week. So we're hopeful to hear sometime in the next week and then we are ready to push button go as soon as it happens.
Thank you so much for your work. Thank you for helping me find my way.
That's right. Anytime, campus can be a little confusing in spots.
We all commend you for that outstanding uh partnership that you have and this program that you developed. We're very inspired by it and very encouraged moving forward, so thank you very much.
No problem, we're very excited about it, it's just something very different than what most of the other superior grants are doing, even those that we're working with are very different. This one is just a unique way of looking at it, to try to both fill the needs of our local district, but also trying to support our teachers to get through and finish their degrees. To fill the massive shortages we have.
Yeah, well, the partnership and that level of, of collaboration was very apparent. Um, not, not necessarily described as easy.
No, there's give and take.
That's very impressive, so.
Yes, we do, we be bi-weekly as a collective group, so it is always nice to get together and we discuss all the issues that come up, not that there's not any. Um, but then we can try to find compromises if we're ready to.
We want to keep all these people in Iowa, so you're doing a really good job.
That is the goal.
Storm Lake as well, so.
Yeah, Storm Lake really needs them.
Yeah.
Very much need them, so that's my hope and our hope is to get, we started a new, did she talk about the high school project possible? And the college, so right now, instead of just servicing our current parent educators, we've also looked at project possible is what she's called it, which is actually to give our in-service teachers currently at B B U. A scholarship to actually do hours in her district. Um, and that is to hope to attract some of our current graduates to stay. Because what we see, a lot of our young college graduates want to go off to big cities, they want to go to Des Moines, they want to go to Omaha, they don't want to stay in small rural Iowa. So our hope is that this will also attract of a pipeline that will start not only from her own school, but also within B B U. So she's studied really well with that as well.
Thank you so much, we're gonna break for lunch and if you wanna have a deeper conversation with Brittany.
I will be here. Thanks, enjoy lunch.
Thank you. Yes, nearly twelve thirty, we will break a half hour for lunch and board reports, we're gonna have.
Ready to roll, right? Well, reconvene the board meeting, uh, we decided to delay the board report so that we're back online. So Cass could hear what was going on as far as board reports are concerned and Cass, do you have anything for us as far as the board report this month?
Uh, Community College Council met yesterday, um, so I wanted to just give a thank you for everyone that joined. Particularly while we were traveling and, and being mobile all at the same time. Um, the focus of our conversation was around rules and accreditation reports, so we had a follow-up on Western Tech. And Iowa Valley uh will be coming up in a future meeting. Um, I think those were my big things, so thank you for delaying, so I can hear everybody's reports.
Um, I had the opportunity to have a, about an hour conversation with Justin Lewis, he knew. The division or bureau chief, bureau chief for STEM. So um, kind of at overseeing the, the STEM activities and so that was, that was really exciting. Um, he um is excited to get into his work and support all the STEM initiatives that are going on um under the Governor's Advisory Council. And I saw he posted, he was up in the northeast, up at the Uni Dome at a STEM festival the other day, so. Um, stayed in touch with him. Um, and I also, I just wanted to also um echo uh Director Snow's comments about the summit coming up, um, the STEM and workforce summit. In Des Moines on April ten. Um, if you have the opportunity to go, it, it will be eye-opening, obviously, it's not the same as a site visit, but. You will have the chance to see a number of programs um in action because they do bring demos. Um, so you can see the different schools, the STEM bests and kind of, um, they really showcase what they do. So if you have a chance to go, I recommend you do.
Okay, Mike?
Well, as most of you know, I've been out of the state for about two and a half months, so just got back last week. Uh, so I really have anything to report to you, but I just, uh, I just offer this. Uh, you have a really bright bunch of people here, talented and diverse in what you do and the knowledge you bring to the world. And uh, I really appreciate that, I think that uh it was really tough. Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, Brooke, I think, we know how we sort of persevered through that, through that, and it was very difficult. You guys have really brought it together, John, you did a nice job of leadership, uh, just very good job. And I just encourage you to represent the kids with Iowa passion with your heart. But they're the number one reason we're doing this, not to pacify anybody, but if I ask dumb questions sometimes, I'm, it's okay. For me, okay, if it's a dumb question, I'm, but I'm gonna ask and I want to know uh that we are doing this. Primary purposes to help kids in Iowa, so I just reminded you this, don't be afraid to do that, and if you're not willing to, then you shouldn't be here. Uh, but uh, again, I learned to really appreciate all of you and uh thank you for what you, the kindness you've extended to me even when it appeared that was being pretty dumb. So, anyway, so, uh, thank you, thanks guys.
Nobody ever entertained that thought, no.
We appreciate your questions.
Mary, Kevin?
I do not.
Brian?
I have just a short, um, so I told you in the past about. Employers addressing early childhood in, in the Dubuque area, Dubuque County, and twenty-nine of thirty-two businesses were surveyed. Uh, some of the larger employers by Greater Dubuque Development. And. The number one comment was lack of early childhood is a barrier to their employment needs. Um, happy to report in part based on a half a million or five hundred thousand dollar, half a million dollar grant from the state. Cost an additional nearly a million dollars raised by business community. Um, there'll be five hundred more. Early childhood slots in Dubuque County. A hundred and twenty add a new. Uh, preschool daycare to be operated by the Y, the Dubuque Y. And uh, with some subsidy from businesses uh on the west side of town. And a large amount of money, uh, five to six hundred thousand next year and then some more after. To subsidize the early childhood programs in existence who are not operating to capacity because of a lack of uh. Like they're gonna fill all the gas tanks to fall, if you will, um. And that'll, some of those two things will provide five hundred additional slots. So I thought that was pretty, pretty good news. Public-private partnership.
That's very good, it's. The, the early childhood childcare, you know, is, is really difficult. Because you have to make it affordable, but if you make it too affordable, then you can't run your program because you don't have the funds for your program. Yeah, and so it's kind of a yin yang type of situation, so any type of extra funding helps out tremendously.
A lot of people have been working for a long time to, you know, the business community, hey, we need, we want to address our employment, but now people understand. Not only that, but third grade readings as well now, but um, you know, they're, uh, they're putting some money where their, where their mouth is, so that's good.
Outstanding, yeah.
Well, it should help them with their.
That's the whole point.
Yeah.
We're gonna have an early.
I mean, not the only, I'm saying, the point is to provide quality childcare, um, and preschool, but uh. To address in an intermediate and long-term way, employment needs, I mean, you don't have to be an employer to know that. It's hard to hire employees, period, it's. The pool is smaller, it's no different for teachers than it is for. Secretaries, lawyers, paralegals, accountants, any professional, doctor's office, business people, factory workers, it's all the same. So that's all I got.
Um, nothing major to report, um, I just always love, um, coming to these meetings this morning, it was so awesome. Um, hearing them, you know, I mean, we, it's nice to have a connection to what we're actually doing here. So I think that sometimes it feels like we're doing stuff up here, but you know, it's really nice when I go to parent teacher conferences for my first grader Eddie at Greenwood Elementary. Um, and they're like, oh, you know, in first grade, we're gonna be doing clocks, you know, working on like, you know, telling time and money. And I'm like, and then we appear today that, you know, in fourth grade, they're gonna start doing, I was like, that's amazing, wow, okay. And with reading, it's the same thing, you know, you get the modules, um, they send stuff home to the parents about, um, like mod, you know, this is what we're working on now, this is a unit. And they incorporate science into it, he's like a huge science person, so they'll, you know, stars or, you know, space and then it works on the reading and, and everything. And so it's really, really nice to, here's what we're doing and then here's what you can do to help support your student learning, which is awesome, you know? And so I just, it's, it's really, really nice to see that connection between what we're doing here and to actually see it in my child and actually like be able to ask the right questions, so. I love seeing that, so.
Well, the, I guess the items to bring to the board, not so much to, under the board's control. Or the D E's control is, you know, the legislative items that are, they're causing some real anguish. In the, you know, as far as just the uncertainty of things as far as. And supplemental state funding, is it gonna be this or this or that? And then we certify our budgets accurately without knowing a specific number, of course, the A E A situation and. And then when you don't have your budget number for next year, then you trigger talks about layoffs because we don't know how much we have to cut or what we do not cut. And so it. Teacher employee negotiation, so we're hoping for certainty ASAP. Whether, you know, just give us something that we can count on and take to the bank or plan accordingly. And I think, I think that's gonna happen, we just hope it happens. Anyway, that's all I have, unless somebody else has something they.
just remember they wanted to bring.
One more question as you bring up legislation. Um, with the board composition and that being a topic, um, I know we talked a little bit about that in the Community College Council discussion yesterday. Um, with the Board of Education composition itself still being debated in the House and the Senate, um, the student member and kind of how they're talking about that. How, how is it being debated or how, how is that conversation happening? Um, and I, I'm asking because I'm just wondering if the, the student participant could be expanded to including potentially a community college application. Could it be a high school or community college student? Knowing that our system represents K through fourteen essentially. And how do, how do we enter that into the conversation? Or could we? If we want. You know, it's a Cassie question. John, it's a Cassie question.
It would have to be a legislative. No, it, it, the code does specify, um, uh, high school, and we currently have that application open. We've extended it, um, uh, to ensure robust applications for that student member. Uh, but, but my understanding is that it would require a statutory change. Um, that's a great idea though.
But this would be that, like, while they're talking about it now, I mean, this would be the time to propose it, right? So how could we, how would we do it? Who could we would do?
So the, it will require code correction because it specifies grades ten and eleven. I think within the current framework, there could be given preference to students who are, who are enrolled in current concurrent enrollment coursework to have that community college, uh, perspective as well. As to how to make that happen within the context of this current legislative session, I think we need to, uh, defer to Eric Sinclair, who's not here today, but I do think it's something that we could raise that, uh, Director Snow had often raised to him.
We're happy to share that feedback.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then just before we leave board reports, I wanted to go back to Board Member Kane's point about, uh, childcare act. And just wanted to again raise the impact and the essential impact of having credentials to childcare careers and and ensuring that, uh, school districts are aware of that opportunity to help grow your own childcare workforce that, um, reflects and is of the community being served. Laura?
Item thirteen on the agenda, Choice Charter School.
We love you, John.
All right. My name is Sarah Lloyd, and I am an educational program consultant here at the department. And I have with me.
Thomas Mayes, you've heard from me already today.
And, um, on Zoom, we have Dr. Cynthia Knight. She is the Director of Choice Charter. We have Allison Studerman, and I hope I didn't watch her name too much. She's a lawyer for Burke Gentry Law. Um, Marsha Powell is curriculum director at Choice Charter School. Charles Nasser is the principal of Choice Charter School and the Doctor Knight. Okay. Uh, so that's who we have, uh, available for choice. Um, what I'll do is I'll very briefly go through, um, what your, what's in your packet and, um, our recommendation. And then, um, you can ask me questions, ask the, the charter questions. So, um, of course you've got the executive summary and briefly goes over what we're doing here today. The packet is in a little bit different order than, um, what you probably want to talk about it in. And so, um, I'm gonna ask you to go to the, not the, the first uh, part, but then the second part. And the second part would be, it would be titled Choice Charter. And it's, it is the information from the department. So briefly, what you have in that document is you have our assessment, uh, amendments to the charter. Um, and it begins with the background, um, it gives you the code citations. And then we have a brief paragraph that talks about the requests that they're making. They are requesting to add two grade levels. Um, seventh and eighth grade, they are requesting to remove the educational service provider, which is Jardal Academy. And they're asking for, um, a limited, um, waiver to two fifty-six point eleven subsection five. It was educational standards, offer and teach. And then as a part of that, there are some in the eighth grade, they will be asking for a very limited waiver to two fifty-six point eleven subsection four. So, and then the table, um, is just kind of, it's an easy way to see where the original contracts being amended with their documents. And then we have some information about the public form that they had, um, to let their public know that they are asking for these, uh, contract amendments. And it talks about who was there from the department, who was there from Choice, and there were no public numbers of the um, and then we have a, a recommendation, of course, is there at the end, and it is for, um, it is recommended that, that we approve, I mean, the contract. And then, um, I wanna kind of jump back then to the, the second attachment, which is um, titled First Amendment to the Charter School Contract Between Choice Charter School and the Iowa State Board of Education. And that would be what comes right after your executive summary. And just kind of to briefly, um, log up a lot of legal jargon there, but, um, it's all numbered out about what the, what section of the contract they're amending. So like number one, the section two, and it talks about, um, you know, specifically what they're, what they're wanting to waive. Um, they want, they also talk specifically like two talks about what's gonna be struck specifically. Um, then, uh, number three, section one A is a strike, section one or section. Yeah, I remember number one C is your performance framework. So they have provided you with an amended performance framework, and this is amended from the original contract. And it includes, uh, grade seven and eight. So that's in this, this particular document. And that takes up a, a bulk of that document. And then, um, number five on there, there, and then it again talks about, um, the waivers that they're requesting. Because in the original contract, it stated, of course, that there was no way. So then, um, this would be the third item, proposed charter school contract, Choice Charter School. This is, this is their original contract. So in that packet, the, the next attachment would be their original contract that is signed. Um, I believe it was April twenty, twenty-two. So that has all that information in it. And then finally, um, in your packet, there is a document titled Choice Charter School Request for Often Teach Exemption Courses, Iowa Code Section two fifty-six point eleven. And again, this is nicely numbered out. It talks, and now if you look at, um, for example, number three talks about, um, grade seven and eight. The exception that they're asking for for the career and technical education. Number four talks about grades nine and twelve. Um, the, the exceptions are asking for, are the waiver that they're asking for, for two fifty-six point eleven subsection five. And what I just wanna kind of point out to you is that they're not asking to waive all of those requirements. What's that? They're asking for specific points of that. So they're asking for, instead of one full unit of health, they're asking for a half a unit. They'd be required to, to offer and teach a half a unit. They're asking for math. They're asking to waive that fourth sequential unit of math. Um, you, you required offering teach two fifty-six point eleven, subsection five requires six units of math. Four sequential secondary units and then two additional units. They are asking to waive that fourth sequential, uh, unit. Uh, career and technical education, they're asking, um, to be exempt from the four strands. They wanna offer two strands. So, um, in, uh, two fifty-six point eleven, subsection five, you have to have four strands with three courses each. So they're, they're, they're asking for a modified, not a complete. And then finally, on the last page, number six, they give you their rationale for why they're asking for these. So, um, I did wanna mention to the board, and this is not in the packet. Um, I, I ran their, oh, not really ran is not a good word. I looked at their offer and teach through, uh, SRI. And I looked at their bed submission and their SRI offer and teach, they meet, uh, the full requirements this year. So, um, they do meet the requirements this year. Um, and they also for like CTE, they were, it appeared to me, now we always, uh, ask CTE to verify that, but it appeared to me that they had their strands with three, three courses each for each strand. And, um, then I did, uh, look at their bed staff and they do have staff to teach what they need to teach. So there any additional questions for me? Did I miss anything?
So, so they, they have the teachers and they are doing it now? And so help, help me. What's the rationale for the change?
I, I would like to defer to, to Dr. Knight, maybe, and, uh, their principal, maybe to.
I mean, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but I didn't.
They do.
So. So in the event that we don't meet it, that was why, um, we were encouraged to ask for the waiver from the department, just in case there was a chance that we could not meet the offer and teach. We do meet it right now and we plan to meet it for the duration, but, um, our kids, the type of students that we, um, are teaching and they really just want a high school diploma and to get on to the next thing in life. Um, so that's why we're asking for that in the event that we don't, we have the waiver in place that says it's okay.
My experience with the, the charter has been, um, they, they do a very good job of, uh, individualizing the educational program for the student. So, you know, if they had a student that did want that fourth sequential unit of math, I, I think I have every confidence that they would be able to offer that. They have the staff to offer it. And they, they have shown in the past that they are more than willing to work with students to, to provide for them with that.
So is this a preemptive waiver? Like, is that, is that what I'm gathering? Is that right now that charter is offering and teaching all these areas that are being proposed to be waived? This is preemptive, like sometime in the future if they, if they can't, is that? All right. The follow-up question I would have is that, um, if this were a it, public school, K-12, asking these type of waivers, would we grant them? So I'll take the questions in the order that they were asked and then, uh, defer to folks from Choice Charter to answer. Having this preemptive waiver, uh, to borrow your words, takes a little bit of scheduling and course planning off of, takes that load off of the, um, charter school and it allows it to, um, if student population changes over time, uh, it allows the charter to have flexibility. Would we necessarily, would the board necessarily entertain or the department necessarily entertain a request for a waiver beyond that which is permitted in statute, uh, for a K-12 school, a, a comprehensive high school, public or non-public? Uh, I don't think so, but that's why charters are charters. In public school is public school and non-public schools are non-public schools. I think the external check on that is the performance frame that, uh, graduating high school, uh, meeting all of the performance frameworks, uh, measurements regarding literacy and math. That's how I'd answer both of your questions. And then defer to the, defer to the providers from Choice Charter and their council to, uh, to supplement that answer.
They just kind of throw a, a wrench in the, in the ears or whatever. So is, is the concern, uh, we've got somebody to teach it, but if nobody takes it, then we have a problem, right? I mean, we've got, we make them, you have to also teach it to somebody. So is.
That is exactly. Yes, that's exactly the problem.
Okay.
And if this had been in the initial application, we could have granted this. And, yeah, yes. Correct. We're, we're, uh, have we done this before though, like this? We have, I mean, I, I can't think of one. Hamburg Charter High School has selected. At the beginning. At the beginning. Yeah. Well, this is the first amendment request. Okay.
But, but we did tell them, I mean, that these things could be amended.
We did, we did. I recall.
Contract, I mean.
I'm just trying to understand. This is the first amendment.
Yeah.
In light of her response, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Why force, you know, you can't, can't do this anymore. Yeah, that's, that's not such. I, I think that rationale is.
Particularly for, if you have a population of over, overage and accredited kids, I mean, it's hard to say, yeah, you've gotta take this so we can meet us. And I will tell you that the original, original on two fifty-six F, um, original charter law did, did not require that.
So I'd like to spend just a minute on, on the math. So Cynthia, or you may need to tell us what parts of the map. President of the high school.
I can speak to that and I can speak to the CTE strands as well. Currently, um, CTE programming is going in the direction that it will require a CSSO for each one of the CTE areas. So if you have ag, you have FFA. If you have business, you have DECA. Um, we're in some, some limbo, whether or not that is the local school or that is Choice Charter School that is supposed to be offering those additional organizations. That was part of the rationale behind shifting from four CTE to two CTE that we thought we could easily offer two organizations if, if the law, uh, stayed fuzzy on the statutes, but offering four different organizations might be a problem. As to the math, we currently have, um, a year of remedial math, a year of consumer math, which includes financial management skills, pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, and algebra two. We also are working with Marshalltown Community College to offer a statistics class and a trades math class starting in the fall. We have had limited number of students add or ask for algebra two. We have looked into adding statistics, but statistics does not necessarily meet that four-year articulated strand of classes.
I'm gonna thank you for the, the math. I'm gonna flip back to CTE. So going from, let's say, four strands to two strands, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. We, we, CTE is more than just the classes. It's becoming an accompanying organization like FFA or, um, a computer science organization. There's one for each one of the six CTE organizations. If we offer classes in the four CTE strands, but we don't offer those CSSO organizations in addition, then we will be struggling to meet the needs of the. Then we will be struggling to meet the needs of the C T E requirements. And that's where the conversation started in.
Yeah, I I understand that, but going forward, if this is approved, will you still be offering? Coursework in the other, the two strands that you're not going to officially count towards accreditation?
Absolutely, computer science is required by another statute for the uh certification of schools starting next year. And our business classes have proved to be incredibly um popular. And we started out um with F C S, so F C S and ag were offered last year. So we intend to offer all four areas, but we don't know about this additional piece, that's where the waiver started from.
So the coursework may not change at all, but here.
But there are additional requirements that are coming down the pipeline that may be a concern.
I forgot that, thank you for that clarification.
Can you just share a quick update on enrollment numbers and outcomes, how students are doing and completion?
So we have currently two hundred and fourteen students and last year we graduated twenty one students. So we've only been in, uh, we've only had one graduating class right now.
Would you talk to us a little bit about the the rationale for adding seventh and eighth grade students to the mix?
We have had lots and lots of requests from parents asking and lots of um. Applications coming in for seventh and eighth grade, and so I just see that there's a a need. To add those um grade levels to um help support our families in a public school.
And the waiver you're requesting for seventh and eighth, can you just briefly explain that one, please?
I believe that one is for the um, the C T E classes too, the um exploratory classes. So that we we will meet their needs, but um it'll be based on the student needs instead of making kids take classes.
But seventh and eighth grade is supposed to include career exploration, how do you accomplish that?
I'll defer to my curriculum director, yeah.
I believe I can answer that, we currently use something called the Pathful Program. Which does career exploration in all of the six major areas, including health science. Um, and that is one strand that we do not have currently in our C T E program. So we will be able to do exploratories in all of the areas. But we will offer opportunities in exploratory that um may be uh uh ag related. Or business related, but it may not have an actual exploratory class for each one of the six areas.
As a young student, know what what they're interested in as far as a career and if they have limited choices as far as what they can use.
I come from a background of a lot of different schools. And most seventh and eighth graders have a vague idea of what they want to do. That's why this Pathful Program is so helpful, it has examples of thousands of careers. And some of the interest assessments that are provided by uh the national work organizations. What then happens usually in smaller rural schools. Is there may be an exploratory in art or in music or in ag or in F C S. But there's not necessarily an exploratory that is nine weeks. In every single one of those content exploratory areas. And we're trying to make clear that we plan on offering exploratory classes, but they will be broader, they will not. Specifically say, here's an information science exploratory and go through all six of them, they will be more integrated.
Do your students develop a career plan as they move through high school? And now if we add seventh and eighth here, if we add seventh and eighth, do they all have an individual career plan that they're working on?
That is a requirement in eighth grade as they go into ninth grade, so yes.
I think I've asked enough questions, let somebody else ask questions. Any other questions? Just me?
I think I would move the question then at the state board approval, the amendments to Choice Charter School.
It's been moved by Mike and seconded by Brooke. To approve the recommendation for the waivers, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Motion is carried. Alright, that's the end of our, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're adjourning our business meeting and starting with the work session. Charter School Monitoring Update.
Good afternoon, still seeing the waiver, this time I am here with Dr. Barbara Oland. And she's going to give us an update on the status of our eight newly approved charter schools. But um before we do that, I just wanted to um publicly thank Janet Boyd. She's going to be retiring in a couple of weeks after thirteen years with the department.
So so was the charter schools a quick trade?
I know when I'm at that age where I'm eligible to retire. I will, I will, I enjoy the state board, miss all of you, but wouldn't be in Florida, first weekend.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Janet.
So since I took.
Thanks, Janet.
Since I took over as bureau chief a year ago, Janet kept threatening this, that she would find me retired. So I thought that it was probably a good time to put a team around charter schools. So um a little after that, I asked Barbara and Stacy Stokes to start working with Janet. With the directive, get everything out of Janet's head that you can, and let's get everything documented, we just want a smooth transition when Janet did make this decision. So um with that, I'm going to turn this over to Barbara to give us a repubbing.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, as Tina said, my name's Barbara Oland. And I have been in front of the state board before, um but I don't know if you remember. Um, I do work in the pre-K twelve uh learning division at the department across lots of things. That go across bureaus like I D A, special education, um every student's seat act, social motion behavior. Um, things like Scanline Council Bluffs, lots of different things. And also, as Tina said, I'm now going to be involved in charter schools. And I am uh very much looking forward to being able to learn as much as possible. Yeah, to serve you all as well as charters in the state of Iowa in this capacity. And I hope to learn as much as I can um along the way, we have been trying to empty Janet's brain. Favor, um and you know, I I am really looking forward to serving in this capacity and. And I do hope you bear with me and with Stacy as we learn everything that we need to learn to do this work. Um, and without a minute to turn over, get Stacy to introduce herself.
I'm Stacy Stokes, I'm an education program consultant as well, and in the Bureau of School Improvement, same division. As Barbara as well, and Barbara and I have worked together as well, and I'm really looking forward um to continue to work in charter schools. Also, some of my responsibilities include open enrollment, um online learning and also Title I school improvement, so that's just a little bit about me.
I'll turn it back to Barbara. Stacy, I appreciate it, so you do have a handout and the, this is what I'm going to be going through. I know Tina said that we're going to provide an update across all eight charter schools, but we're really focused on only uh the two. Um, that I'm going to talk to you about today, um each charter school, as you know, has to have a pre-opening checklist, that was in their application materials. Um, even though the charter schools have different um number of items, um different items across their checklists. We organize it into several different categories um across the charter school opening checklists. We also added, so it's really eight different categories that we look at. Um, your handout reviews all those details, but the the seven that they look at for the pre-opening checklist include enrollment and admissions. Um, their governance, making sure they have a governing warrant that they meet, um educational programming. Um, staffing, all the things that you have to take care of, um for staffing, life insurance and so on. Uh, budget and finances is a very large area as well as facilities, they need to have facilities to um be able to have a charter and use open charter. And other areas which really are those things like food services and transportation. Um, then our things that we care about are the items that need to be in place in order for a charter just to function within the state. Make sure that they have their student information system, make sure they have an A A accounts so that we can talk to one another and so forth. So those are the areas that they look at, that we also um look at over time to make sure that they are ready to open when they say they want to open. That we look at as a state, as you guys look at as a state board to make sure that they're ready to open.
So, Barbara.
Mm-hmm.
I will, the checklist, just give me a ballpark, like how many items are on the complete checklist, I mean, just in general.
They, well, they vary, a lot of them have around thirty eight items on their checklist, uh distributed across those um seven areas. And then we have ten additional items with the department. But uh, for example, um uh scholarship prep has eighty four items. This has to do with grain size and what they care to follow. They all have about the same thing, but scholarship prep has just broken it down into little smaller bits.
Yeah, thank you.
But most of them are around thirty eight. So we're really focused on uh Great Oaks and Empowering because they're opening doors August twenty twenty four. The rest of them are not opening doors until a year from there, so they are just getting into their pre-opening checklist. It doesn't quite make sense to report on those because they're taking little baby steps over here. Great Oaks and Empowering are uh really doing um great strides in getting their checklist done. So they are on track to be opening in August of twenty twenty four at this time. Um, for example, Great Oak has um about half of their own personal items done as well as what we have asked them to do. For our D E next steps, and Empowering has about twenty percent of what their checklist says and. Uh, also about half of this, of the of the items that we have asked them to do.
Barbara, do they, do they have their specific location nailed down?
Yeah, Empowering. Um, not that I know of right now, uh but they're working with Cedar Rapids, they're working within the community to be able to do that.
Are they recruiting students right now as we speak and innovate, is this going on?
Uh, they're talking right now with Cedar Rapids to um uh work with them. To basically have a definition of what it looks like for students that are dropping out or not being successful in Cedar Rapids. That would then transition into Empowering, so they're working on that right now.
So the public schools, we have they involved in, who makes this recommendation about?
Empowering is working directly with Cedar Rapids, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, Empowering was already operational within the confines of the Cedar Rapids district, is that correct?
They have a portion of what they do directly within the school district and are working directly with them. The um Empowering Excellence Charter is independent.
Right.
Um, from the school district, but they are working directly with the school district to be able to describe what that looks like for Empowering. What it looks like for students to transition from Cedar Rapids into Empowering.
Is there enough time to get a space and have it ready for August?
I, well, Great Oaks is also in the same spot and um from, I don't have a lot of experience for charters, like. I don't have that experience to tell you, yes, absolutely, I think that would be doing you a disservice. Um, I think that Empowering has many options that are available to them right now that they're looking into.
They mentioned that, I I. I'm the, they probably just need to pick one and.
Go with it.
I think they, I think they have a space that they use for.
They do have a space.
Default, right?
They might like move out of that space.
Oh, okay.
They've been accredited.
I thought they was.
So they wanted to move back.
Isn't it?
Oh, they.
It's in the credit union, it's not demolished.
Oh, it's, it's, they want to be able to move out of the credit.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they, I think, oh, because I remember the hours and stuff they have, students might be coming to evening, I think the credit union was more of like an eight to like four or five kind of thing.
Yeah.
So they want students to be able to come in at later, okay, yep, I remember that.
And just in Great Oaks, did they have two for different grade levels or just one?
One.
Okay.
As far as I don't. I'll let you know if I'm incorrect.
Because we had some that had multiple charters.
They were looking, Great Oaks was looking at space, Park Fair. And I don't know that that's been signed.
Not, not that I know, yeah.
Can you repeat that for our board member that?
Is that Park Terr or Park View?
Park Fair.
Park Fair Mall.
North and North High School. Um, the, I don't know, I think that's, you live in Sixth Avenue, I think.
If you remember that in that mall, there was, there was already uh places that they could partner with in their C T E courses, their C T E focus.
I'm sure they had followed the same um. Construction facility guidelines as well, a regular school, our aspire code and all.
Yes.
Other.
Yes. They are required to.
I'm just thinking, yeah.
Would be hard to recruit people that didn't know exactly where they were going to be.
I don't think that's our concern.
My concern is that it be ready and operational.
That's all part of that checklist.
Yeah.
I know.
I think it will become our concern in uh May if they are not further.
But what, yeah, what does on track mean exactly?
It means that they're on track to complete the full.
In in a timely fashion, so right now we believe they will have it all written.
Yep, because they're about half done with their own checklist as well as the D E checklist. Uh, Empowering is about twenty percent done with their whole checklist and about half done with the bar, so five out of ten out of our.
And you have to approve the location, where the location might be. You would approve that where it's located at?
We don't, we don't have that.
Nothing, I don't want to do that.
How often do you follow up with them, so how, when, when or how are you monitoring to know their schedule of completion of the checklist?
We've created um um a checklist that's online that all of the charters access. They need to complete that checklist monthly, so we know where they're at on it and if we need to follow up with any conversations.
So just to be clear, let's say come May or June, you are not satisfied that they continue to remain on track. What is, what is your action at that?
I think it becomes the state board action, so uh we are reporting to the state board monthly. I think it becomes the state board action. So uh we are reporting to the state board monthly.
Yeah.
So in May, we'll come with another update to the state board. We will have talked about it internally to provide a recommendation of what we might uh recommend the state board, what action the state board might do, but then it would be your decision on what action that would be.
Perfect. Yeah, and I mean, my feeling is that we can, we put the process in place. You guide them and, you know, as as much as you can when they reach out or or not, but it's like anything else. You have a plan and you're working on the plan and then something happens that perhaps is out of your control. But, you know, we're here to at least say, how's it going? Do you need any help? Um, but at some point, if they get to a, it's, you know, they can't nail down that facility or whatever, hire the people or recruit the students, then it's a no go. But, um, okay, interesting. So is it a question, since one of these is in the city where I live, is it appropriate or inappropriate for a board of State Board of Education member to ask for a meeting with them to see how things are going, both to understand their process and then honestly, you know, kind of how the interaction with the state and our process, because we're all kind of new to this. Just curious. Anybody?
I don't know the answer to that. I can't imagine that that would be a problem, but I don't know the answer to that. Thomas?
I'll ask you later.
And so I think this, this is something with broader discussions about the roles of the authorizers. Uh, certainly you as a member of the community can visit. The question would be, are you doing so in your capacity as a board member versus as a as a member of the community and a neighbor? So I think um let's, let's pause on that. Uh, because it's a fine line in, like. If you say something during the visit, either a word of encouragement or a word of something other than encouragement, what, what could the charter school infer from that?
Yeah.
Are you speaking on the board's behalf? So I think that, that if, it might be something is, is this board and the department flushes out the role of the authorizer, there might be time, time, place, manner for that, but not yet.
Yeah.
That's my suggestion.
I appreciate that.
Well, this could come back to us as a, and they say they do X under the contract. We said, no, we needed Y. Now there's a dispute. I'd rather you guys be talking to them than, that's what you're talking about, right? We could have a conflict.
So I.
Put potentially on the line.
Downline, right? So I think bundling the questions through professional staff at the board at your direction as the authorizer, I think that that would be uh sort of a cleaner audit tram. I agree with them.
So currently, they're both on track to be able to open their doors in August twenty twenty four. Uh, but they have one month or six weeks to really get rock and enroll in. So um I think by uh May uh they will have um many more of those items checked off and will be able to talk further about where they're at with their facilities and other items on the checklist. If there's any concerns, we'll certainly talk about that.
And they want to make sure their contracts were all signed and ready to go before they entered into another contract with locations and priorities.
So we'll get another update.
You do.
In May.
You'll get to see us again.
I'm.
Would, would it be appropriate to have another update in April, that are April three or seventh, maybe?
I'm, we find with whatever.
This may, like, may be more of a definitive point of action. Well, I was gonna say, maybe it's a, if you're seeing any concerns, I would hope you would bring it to us earlier than later. But maybe if they're kind of on track, then, you know, we wait for that May.
Absolutely. Well, they update it every month.
Yeah.
So we certainly can provide that update. Or you put in your report.
Happy to. Um, just the only piece of context is we've got about five hours already budgeted um of content for.
For eight.
Yeah. Um, so, but uh I mean, to, to accommodate the priorities of the board however. If you could just add that in your report, I would be satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Iowa Community College Joint Enrollment Report.
Oh, I was like, I thought you were there. Did she leave? My hours of content.
I know.
I don't think you are, sorry.
I know, right?
Okay, Jeremy, what do you have for us?
Great. Uh, good afternoon. Jeremy Barnard, head of the Community Colleges and for Secondary Ready to Seem Department, and I'm here to talk to you about our high school students enrolling in community college coursework or joint enrollment. I'm cognizant of the time and it's also afternoon and I'm talking about data, so I will rush through this kind of quickly, but um don't hesitate to stop me and hit me with questions. I'm happy to talk about anything to great detail. I am pleased to report that we are seeing continued progress in terms of growth of joint enrollment opportunities for our students, building off our position as a national leader. And that's really no small feat. Um, a great deal of intentional effort uh by folks at all levels to expand these opportunities to our students. And it's done not only, you know, not only are we increasing uh broad participation, uh, but we're doing it in a high quality way with a robust uh quality assurance framework that includes national accreditation through N A C E P and meeting national standards. So uh really, really pleased with uh where we're at. So what we have for you today is a report that's in your packet. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty three data on uh joint enrollment, uh academic year and trend data, headcount enrollment, credit hours taken, student demographics, grade level participation, enrollment in the courses the students are taking. The one departure you'll see from prior years is, you'll notice this report's maybe half the length of what you've gotten in the past. The second half of the report all have been institutional profiles, so individual community college kind of snapshots of joint enrollment trends. Uh, those we have moved to online. We are kind of making an intentional effort to produce fewer uh static publications and reports and create more data visualization tools. And so those have become online tools and I'll give you a link to those uh in this PowerPoint. I suppose it's in your, in your packet. It's one of the later slides. So joint enrollment um is primarily delivered a few different ways. Um, uh, through contracted courses, through P S E O and through tuition paying uh courses, so meaning with tuition paying students are enrolling independently of their district, just enrolling in community college courses. The vast majority of students are enrolled through these contracted courses where districts have an agreement with the community college to make these opportunities available. You can see that ninety seven percent of the total. That's not to say that the tuition part isn't growing. It actually grew ten point eight percent from the prior year. It's just a much smaller base. So as students take more college courses, they're also independently enrolling in more uh college courses, but the bulk are through those agreements. And of course, that's where their state funding, so it's, that's not uh particularly a surprise. P S E O um doesn't show up in here because uh basically over the last five years that that is uh dropped off. If, if districts and colleges have agreements in place, then P S E O is not, not an option. It's a legacy program from the eighties. So if you have any question why that's not showing up there, that's the, that's the case. Okay, so uh top line message here is that joint enrollment of high school students is up five point five percent from the prior year to a record high of fifty two thousand eight hundred fourteen students. Really excited to see that. You can see the overall trend since uh we've uh uh collected data on this is growth since two thousand and four. It's a hundred and fifty one percent increase in annual growth rate of about five percent. You'll see we did have a dip with the pandemic, but we've since uh climbed back out of that. We look at data at the institutional level. Almost half of uh community college students are also high school students, forty five point one percent. So in terms of headcount, it's, it's a pretty sizable amount and in Northeast Iowa Community College and D Mac, over half the student body are high school students. So really a substantial uh footprint there. Now, when you look at it in terms of credit hours, our high school students are tending to take only two or three courses. They're not enrolling full time. So when we look at it in terms of F T E E or credit hours, it's about thirty percent of our, our community college credit hours are, are high school students. Twelve of the fifteen community college experienced growth in credit hours and uh again, pretty sizable footprint there. We look at the courses the students are taking. It's about two thirds arts and science, one third career tech, just a little more than a third that's career tech. Uh, not surprisingly, the top areas of those general survey courses, you think about Comp one oh five, psych, sociology, these kind of courses are, are very common to high school students to be taking, uh calc, uh, uh, the sort of thing. But also the career tech areas are heavily represented. Uh, health sciences, manufacturing, business are all uh substantially represented in, in the top offerings that students are taking. We look at geography, uh, where you're at as a student matters in terms of your access to joint enrollment opportunities. So students have access to community college credit opportunities everywhere in the state. Those white districts are, they're showing up on the map are ones that have uh whole grade sharing or share with, for a high school. Um, so there's, there's opportunity everywhere, but the breadth of the access, it remains very, so geography uh does still appear to matter a great deal. Um, so that's something we continue to monitor. You actually have a map in your packet that's a little easier to see. I think it's still only eight and a half by eleven, but um uh, but you, you can at least see the districts in your area and have a sense of what the joint, uh, does the college, community college course taking that are for each high school. One of the strategies that we use to improve geographic access to concurrent enrollment and advanced learning opportunities is regional centers. And we have our Career Academy Incentive Fund that has been helping to fund uh spur the growth of these. We have uh roughly twenty eight of these centers built out, eight more coming. Um, I'd encourage you actually, uh, we didn't have time to build this into the agenda, but on your way out, you can see there's one going up on the north end of this town, uh, there's uh Sioux Center. I think you go up Lake Street. It's, I could find the address for you. Uh, beautiful facility, uh, with lots of advanced career tech opportunities, manufacturing, electrical, health sciences, uh, and uh Iowa Central has, has put that in place to extend opportunities here uh in, for the surrounding districts. Uh, to provide those college credit opportunities, a really impressive facility, one that was supported by our Career Academy Incentive Fund.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Go for it.
So as um, I'm a huge supporter of these regional centers, but I'm watching more and more community schools creating their own C T E programs that duplicate ones in the regional centers. What, what is our, what is your thinking on that?
Yeah, so it's certainly great to see career tech opportunities uh at all levels, right? So middle school, high school, and regional centers, uh, those don't necessarily have to uh supplant each other. Um, but it is important that they be planned and well thought out. And one of our structures for doing that are regional planning partnerships. They are regional structures where superintendents and partners like the community college and businesses uh meet regularly to take a look at their C T E offerings within the region, what the labor market needs are within the region, and try to find ways to ensure consistent and equitable access to high quality opportunities. That includes regional centers. It can also mean individual program sharing. It can mean thinking about whether they need to phase out some of their offerings or how they're going to make new offers available. C T E programs are capital intensive. And uh, you know, you, you need to have economies of scale to deliver them. So our schools have to partner, right? In order to be able to make those opportunities available and the regional planning partnerships and structures that are uh designed to facilitate that conversation. They are variable, I think, in terms of their, their quality, but we have seen uh over the last several years really substantial movement in most corners of the state. So this map actually isn't current yet. We're going to get the, the new centers put on here, but they are uh, uh, you know, getting put in place everywhere. And then there is this sort of mapping of those off, offerings, right? So how do the middle school opportunities feed into the high school opportunities and feed into regional center opportunities? So um, um, that articulation is something that districts and colleges have to work out together.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mary, I think on the heels of your question too, I, one of the thoughts that I have is how community colleges are linking dual credit to charter schools now as well and thinking just, we had that whole conversation about C T E with Choice Charter as well. So how are those connections being made, Jeremy?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so I know that, um, I don't know if I have a complete answer for you, Cassandra, but there uh certainly are very intentional efforts to expand uh opportunities. I know the uh Storm Lake Charter has a significant amount of concurrent enrollment uh built into it. I think we see that with some of the other charters. Um, but I can't, I can't speak to that in complete detail. So that's a conversation we can look at and maybe come back to you with.
Is that something that we can promote through our conversations as charters or charter applications are being proposed? Is stronger links to community colleges for dual enrollment?
Yeah, I, so I, I think um certainly concurrent enrollment and high, uh, high quality career tech opportunities are great for students. That's something that charters should be looking at. Um, I think that's a, um, um, there's lots of ways to deliver high quality career tech opportunities and how to provide advanced learning opportunities to students. So it's not the only pathway, but it's something that uh institutions should look at and, and something that charters are probably all considering at some level. Okay. Uh, so with the awards, uh, so our community college students, for the most part, concurrent enrollment opportunities are not just about getting uh students, uh, community college awards or credentials prior to graduation, but the number of students earning those credentials is, is growing. Um, last uh year, last uh academic year, we, our community college was awarded over twenty four hundred awards to community college students, uh, largest number being uh short term certificate programs, two, more than two thousand short term certificates. Those are career tech uh, uh, certificates um were made available. Western Iowa Tech was leader in that. Hundred and four one year diplomas, again, career tech diplomas. Indian Hills was the leader in that effort. And we had more than three hundred thirty nine associate degrees, so two year degrees awarded to students before they graduated from high school. And Eastern Iowa Community Colleges was the leader in uh, in that. Uh, when we look at um demographics, we, this year we broke out uh some uh sub op data in a way that we hadn't in prior year reports. Uh, we do see uh some notable achievement gaps um by various demographic categories and um the within various uh student populations. That's something that we are going to break out and track longitudinally, so we can see if those gaps are growing and intend to. And we're going to report some institutional level data as well, building into those online data visualization tools. So institutional decision makers have a better handle on what's going on. Uh, this is the statewide average, but we know these numbers vary a great deal by institution and institutional practices matter a great deal in this space. So uh certainly want to make you aware of those gaps and uh um, uh, note that we are going to provide institutions with uh the information so they can uh work on tackling those gaps.
Keep providing that because, yeah, and as I've asked for it, and it's very helpful to have that. But like, you know, I, I have heard from people that they had no idea about this, you know, like, you know, parents, um, and, and they're just like, I don't understand, like, why didn't anyone, you know, tell us about this, this opportunity? And then it's just, I don't know if, if, if it's just, you know, they're just not, I'm not saying that, you know, they're not saying something to, to black kids or, or, you know, minority students or whatever, but I think that's just, you know, if this is something that's open to all, then it needs to be communicated equally to all those students, on all those parents. And if it's not getting across, however it's been communicated, then it's be communicated in a different way.
It's required. Communication is required. Now, having said that, you just put it out in the student handbook, and that's all you do with that, that's.
But I also think that, you know, especially for, you know, minority students and for low income students, I mean, the advantages of it, you know? Because, I mean, their students might be just be like, oh, I don't want to do that or whatever, you know? But I mean, I think they're just, you know, talking about the advantages of it and, you know, and and maybe they're a household who, you know, college is not something that they even maybe talk about or, you know, plan. Maybe they had come from a household where no one went to college in theirs. And so, I mean, I, I think that, you know, just conversations need to be have prepared for all different kinds of students and all, and you have to meet them where they are, right? And you have to meet their families where they are. So.
Yeah, I do think that this kind of breakdown and then by institution, because, I mean, when you look at that, especially around free and reduced lunch, because the other element is access, right? Because you can have these academies and, and the joint enrollment, but if you have to drive to your community college from your high school to get that opportunity, that's a barrier. Very real. Or a regional center.
What, what are we, right? Districts doing to drive a car?
You know, that's why that math, I mean, I s, I am interpreting those blank spots, you know, in Western Iowa up here and everything. Some of that's because the distance to travel between this, the high schools is kind of, makes a regional center very challenging.
Actually, interestingly, the. Actually, interestingly, the Western Iowa is starting to fill in. There's if there's one coming in in Dennison, there's, there's one up in the Northwest corner. We just funded one in Iowa Western's region. Another one, so there's one in the Surrey Valley that I wasn't going yet, in Templeton. Actually, Templeton one's already open and Missouri Valley's open. But point well taken, transportation is a major issue. It's not always provided. We do with our career academy incentive fund score based on that and set that expectation that, that buses be run. But we know that's not always, always the case. It actually, the case for sharing programs actually grows when the population becomes more sparse, right? So because those individual schools can't opt the tech quality programs on their own. But yes, bottom line is we, we see gaps in access due to a variety of factors, right? Structure availability, leadership of institutions, many factors, right? So those are things we want to track and monitor and help institutional leaders understand.
So thank you, Jeremy. And that's been an excellent respect at your point about college access and also alignment. It may be helpful to have a presentation at some point on the Bureau of Iowa College Aides gear up in college access work that, that is specifically targeted at ensuring equitable access and supporting students beginning in middle school on college and career pathways. That, that entity, the Bureau does have a separate board, the Commission of Iowa College Aid. But, but it may be helpful to, to ensure awareness of each other's work.
Yeah, that'd be great. Europe's a great program. It really is. And I just wondered to Brooke's point, how how that's communicated to parents, because I think students will say, I'm not really interested in that. And it never even comes home.
Exactly. So they, I mean, how would the parents even know about it? Yeah.
And, and I mentioned this in a in a director's update a couple of months ago, but the state recently received a new federal so it, it's a timely potential update. Perfect.
Okay, just a few more slides. Joint enrollment participation by high school class, not surprising, the students taking college credit opportunities when their high school tend to be upperclassmen, underclassmen tend to be less ready, tends to be some CTE offerings in ninth and tenth grade, but predominantly eleventh and twelfth grade students. And I think it's notable that more than half of our public high school seniors participated in a joint enrollment opportunity. So again, that breadth of access, Iowa is not a state that is simply targeting high achieving students. It's, it's broad access targeting, targeting the median student and providing substantial career tech opportunities as well. I talked a little bit about those profiles, which is what they look like. They are online. Feel free to go and play with the data. It's really fun, I promise. Looking at outcomes data, so this isn't in your report, but it's, I think, Brooke, you raised the question. I think maybe at the last state board meeting, I do have a condition of community colleges presentation saying, you know, what are the, how do we know this is working in terms of joint enrollment? What does this look like? So here's a, here's a quick summary. We did dig into this. The national research is pretty clear about the benefits of joint enrollment. Students are more likely to enroll in college after high school. They're, they're less likely to need remediation and more likely to persist and more likely to earn a college degree. There's a little shorter time to degree. We know the benefits are pretty clear, right? Because students get introduced and acclimated to college expectations. When you graduate, smooth that transition from high school to college. Students get access to offerings that wouldn't be available in, in, in necessarily in their high school without partnering with a college. Makes their curriculum more engaging and makes the senior more productive. And I think very importantly, it saves students money, right? College is not cheap and concurrent enrollment is provided at no cost. So we did an extensive study on a twenty-eleven cohort. We followed them for eight years. So this was done maybe twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So it's a few years old. And certainly the students, this is from a little while ago, but the Iowa data supports what the national research shows. And this, just to be clear, this wasn't just a descriptive analysis. There's sophisticated multivariate regression models to control control for student characteristics, right? So we look at the outcomes. It's not just this group is, you know, happens to be higher achieving. And so we see them getting better results, but we've controlled for student characteristics and whatnot to be able to demonstrate that that the joint enrollment is impacting student outcomes. We found that jointly enrolled students are less likely to drop out. They're more likely to enroll in post-secondary education, more likely to graduate, more likely to transfer to a four-year college. They're more likely to go directly to college after high school, get a college award, less likely to drop out, all of those things. And we also know that it reduces time to degree. So students enter the workforce earlier, which we were pleased to see.
Generally, there are any minimum requirements for taking a joint enrollment class? And those we have some five percent or a nightmare percentage of the question.
Yeah. So, yeah. So I mean, I, it's really important. So there's a couple of things. So one, students have to demonstrate proficiency to enroll in arts and science courses, in career tech courses. They just have to meet any local requirements. Usually there, there aren't any, but the advising piece is really important. Students have to be mature and ready. They're going to generate a college transcript. If they fail, it's a problem, right? It's, it's not something that just goes away. So the advising piece is really critical so that students, you know, they have to be mature and ready enough. So and so that's something that we encourage institutions to really focus on, help students make good decisions. Okay, and that's it for me. Any questions? Otherwise, Dr. Heather Meissen put together this report, so I want to give her credit for doing the work. And certainly happy to, feel free to reach out afterwards if you have questions on the drive home. I know this is going to be burning in your minds afterward. Happy to answer.
It's a, it's just a rhetorical question. Thinking a lot, what would community colleges look like without joining home? It's rhetorical. I mean, it's a substantial.
I think one of our goals should be to increase joint enrollment for minority students and low income students, because those are the populations that really, I mean, that is like insane to me. I'm sorry, but like, that's like, that's who it should be. I mean, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. The flip side of your question, what would our high schools look like?
Yeah.
And I'll tag on to that, Brian. I'm just concerned about the kids in the charter schools missing the opportunity that the kids in the public schools are are accessing with that dual enrollment and
So they not have access to the, I mean, can they not do that in a charter school?
They certainly can and something, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They absolutely do. I think it depends on what the charter school's model and mission is. And obviously today we, the charter school that's focused on credit recovery, right?
Another population it would be suitable for. Yes, yes, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Short trip up here.
We have President and CEO of NASB. Is he available?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. How are you doing?
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much for asking.
Yeah, thanks for waiting for us. We're running a little bit behind schedule, which for us, that's not totally out of order.
Totally understand. You have quite a packed agenda for today. You've been hard at work. I hate to, I hate to be here and, uh, holding you from adjournment.
Oh, we haven't helped live yet. So go ahead. Thanks for being with us today.
Well, it's my pleasure, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paulo Di Maria. I'm the President and CEO of the National Association of State Boards of Education, of which I was a fine and outstanding member. I was afforded the opportunity, just to give you the briefest overview of our organization so that, so that you're aware. We find a lot of times that some, depending on the member engagement in our organization, people are either deeply knowledgeable or maybe not so knowledgeable about what it is that we do. I have a few slides that I think are going to be managed there remotely, or if someone would indicate if I need to share at my end, I can do that as well. I always start talking a little bit about our mission statement. And as you can imagine, we are a membership association. And so our mission is, you know, to, to do what you imagine we should do, support, develop, empower the citizen leaders that serve on state boards of education so that they can strengthen public, public education systems so that students of all backgrounds and circumstances are prepared to succeed in school, in work and in life. I noticed that you had a strategic plan as part of your agenda earlier today and that you should see many of the same words. I find so many of us that work in education are all about, you know, at, at its, at its rudiments, helping students achieve, achieve success so that they're prepared to be successful in life. And, and that's what we want to do. We pride ourselves on being a member-driven organization, because that's how we start and that diffuses itself through all the, all the work that we do. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I think that will be a little more helpful if you give me one moment here.
You're welcome to share the screen on your end.
Yes, thank you. So again, I've done this slide and so we organize ourselves regionally. You'll see that Iowa is in our central region. And every region has a board member who is elected by the members of that region to be the area director for that region. And in the central region of, of the US, Patty Gobles, who is a member of the Nebraska Board of Education, currently serves as the area director. This individual tends to be a good, strong point of contact for the states in that region. And also works hard not only to make sure people are aware of the kinds of activities that are happening at NASB, but also when, when we're looking for people to be nominated for board of directors positions or for awards and that sort of thing, area directors coordinate that kind of activity. We also have area liaisons that are on our staff. Each staff member is assigned to a certain area and the central area is served by Valerie Norville. Valerie is not only our editorial director, so she's in charge of all our publications, but she's well versed in a long list of, of policy areas as our, as our, our small but mighty staff. I always like to tell people about some of our foundational documents. I do not, I did not put a picture of our bylaws on here, but our bylaws embrace this concept of being member-driven and, and it's a very important concept, but I have two other documents here. Our most recently adopted strategic plan, which dates to fall twenty eighteen, is called Our Members, Our Mission. And you will find that if you were to read that document, that equity and excellence are really at the focal point of the work that we do and, and also member engagement and being member-driven. The other important document is the NASB Public Education Positions Document. Again, the positions that are embraced by NASB in this document are those that are developed by our Public Education Positions Committee and then recommended to our delegate assembly, which actually votes to either approve or modify or reject positions that are brought before them. And so the document that you, that you would see, if you had the full document in front of you, would represent that kind of a process where it's actual members serving as delegates on behalf of their states have approved it. This is a great benefit to us as staff members because it gives us clear guidance when we're asked to, you know, whether it's weigh in on federal legislation or put together project proposals around things that we want to coordinate and work together with boards to do. The Public Education Positions Document serves as our foundation. This is a little graphic that I use to illustrate the governance structure. As you can see, right at the top is the delegate assembly, which is the assembly of representatives of each of our member states. Through a variety of processes, our members select the board of directors and the current chair of the board is Sarah Moore, who is the Chair of the Arkansas Board of Education, and she chairs the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors is made up of a chair, a chair-elect, an immediate past chair, the four area directors that you saw on that earlier slide, a new member representative, and then the chairs of two affiliated organizations, the National Council of State Board of Education Executives and the National Council of State Education Attorneys. Then there are a number of committees. The green committees are those that are specified in our board of, in our bylaws. You have an executive committee, which is a subset of the board of directors. We also have a nominating committee that engages in nominating for the board of directors offices, a finance and audit committee, which you likely know what they do, so I won't go into too much detail. And then the two most important ones to me are the Governmental Affairs Committee, which we'd like to ensure that every state has a representative on the Governmental Affairs Committee, because it's the committee that is updated on federal government and federal US Department of Education activities that, that impact education, as well as it's a forum for states to share with each other the kinds of things that are happening within their governmental settings, either in their legislatures or in their, on, on their boards. And it allows us to understand, it helps us understand what states are confronting, as well as states to engage in that peer-to-peer dialogue that's so important for a membership organization like ours, where they're sharing their successes, they're sharing their challenges, they're sharing their stumbling blocks and they're, and they're counseling each other. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful thing and it meets once a month. The other important committee is our Public Education Positions Committee, which I referenced earlier. They're the ones that start the year by asking themselves, you know, are, are there changes that are needed to our public education positions? Are there new things that are surfacing? You know, things like AI and other, other issues where we need to develop a position. And then they organize themselves over the course of the year to do that work, ultimately with the goal of presenting to our delegate assembly, which usually meets in the fall in order to take action on those position statements. We also have an awards committee. We have a number of awards that we give out each year and that committee oversees that particular process. We have one ad hoc committee, which is in yellow at the bottom, is our conference planning committee. They, they actually also serve to help us identify those things that are of highest importance to our member states so that we can create meaningful, not only conference sessions, but also other support structures, whether those are other publications, other engagement opportunities and what have you. To the right, you see our, our, our different staff members as well as my position and our editorial advisory board, which helps oversee our, we issue three times a year the state education standard, which is sort of our flagship publication. And, and we engage with board members in getting their editorial advice on the articles that we have developed and then ultimately submit to be part of the state education standard. I've mentioned most of the different committees, but we also have a few networks. We have an early childhood education network. We have a recently